Welcome, everybody, to the first of our three interviews with the finalists for the superintendent's position for the Danvers Public Schools. And I want to thank everyone for being here. Thanks to those of you who've taken the time to come down tonight. As many of you know, this is not being broadcast live, sort of as a way to keep the integrity of the process so that every candidate we interview will be hearing the questions for the first time. So let's begin, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. We have with us today one of our finalists, Peter Cushing. Welcome, Peter. I know you've had a busy day in the district and I hope you had an interesting and lively time here. So I'm going to turn it over to Robin at the moment. This will be a 16-minute interview. Robin, if you'd like to introduce our candidate and we can get started.
Sure. So this is Dr. Peter Cushing. He is currently, and I'm going to, Assistant Superintendent. Give me the whole thing of innovation.
And enrichment.
And enrichment, thank you, at the Medford Public Schools. So he obviously is one of our three finalists. He visited the district today at DHS. He had meetings at Central Office with the principals, Smith School, Riverside, Holton, Richmond, and then you had two, you had meetings with the DTA leadership.
Teachers.
The teachers, I mean, staff, and then you had two community meet and greets for anyone here. So this is his, you know, final interview tonight. So what's going to happen is we will have, you'll have an opening statement. We each have two questions, so there'll be 10 questions in total. And then you'll have an opportunity for closing statement, any questions. And similar to before, if we ask question, then we have a follow-up. And any of us, so like if Alice's, if it's Alice's question, but any of you have a follow-up to that, any of us can ask that, just so you know. And for the community, thank you for coming. If you, any of you who are here tonight, or if you have met Dr. Cushing at any time, there is a Google form that has been posted, like, all over social media that we are asking, it's anonymous, for you to give us feedback. It will be due, all the forms will be due on Monday by 5:00 p.m. so that we have time to look at it prior to the last interview. And you want to fill out one for each candidate that you meet.
All right. So just by way of sort of housekeeping, we'll do the interview and then if we could stay, we'll let Peter go. And then if we can stay in session here for probably 15 minutes or so, maybe 20 minutes, we can talk about the process and what it'll look like going forward since we're all together.
Sure.
All right. So with that, Peter, I believe it's time for you, I'm sorry, Dr. Cushing, it is time for you to give us an opening statement.
So, Mr. Crane, thank you very much, and by all means, Peter, work's totally fine. I really want to thank the members of the Danvers Public Schools, you, the five members of the Danvers School Committee, the teachers that I met today, the students, the custodians who do an impeccable job keeping these, the members of the DPW who do an impeccable job keeping these schools clean. I don't think I've ever been in cleaner schools. They really are amazing. I want to thank all the lunch ladies and lunch staff that I met at the Holton-Richmond School in particular, and all the secretaries and administrative assistants, and basically everybody throughout this district who welcomed me with open arms today. It was really an amazing day. I am inspired by this opportunity to be a part of the Danvers Public Schools, to collaboratively help lead Danvers through, through to the future. And I'm a firm believer, as I've said numerous times today, to members of the community, to Mary Wermers, who did an amazing job taking me around today, and I love the learning from her as well. I am truly inspired by the opportunities that we have in Danvers to make this the flagship school not only of Massachusetts, of the North Shore, but of all of Massachusetts. That the programs and opportunities and things that I saw today with your faculty, staff, and students, educators across the board, this is a tremendous opportunity. The strengths that I saw in your teaching corps, and that goes beyond just teachers, your instructional aides, the people who invest in your students on a daily basis, was truly something to be seen. I saw good instructional practice in walking through classrooms with agendas and what students should be able to do, and other classroom things that are really imperative for our students to be successful. So there are no surprises in their learning. I saw active learning at Holton-Richmond as students were literally sprinting up and down the halls, getting their heart rates elevated. I saw students working in collaborative pairs at the, at the Smith Elementary School outside their classrooms, and was really inspired. I'm someone who believes in leading by the North Star of my core values, the most cornerstone of which is being actively anti-racist and making sure also that I'm a clear communicator, that I'm 100% transparent, almost to the point of, as, as one of the former American generals said, criminality, like, being transparent with the community and being transparent with all stakeholders. It's really fundamentally critical. And then building trust. And I believe that I build trust by being present, by being present at student events, staff events, community events. It's been a hallmark of who I am. And once again, I just want to say how humbled I am to be here before you and to be here before the Danvers community this evening because I am really excited for this opportunity.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. So I have your first question. I'm happy that you spoke about your walkthrough because that's actually the question that I have for you. Could you describe our school district, what you saw today in the schools, meeting the staff, the administrative teachers, et cetera? And then tell us a little bit about what you see as the opportunities that you spoke about and some of the challenges that you think we're facing.
So I think that there are, I think, I'll just go back to the walkthrough real quick. I started my day with the Central Office Leadership Staff, and there was a true sense of community that came through there, that when I asked them what inspired them or what did they love most about the Danvers Public Schools, they said, "These people we're with." And I think that that is a fundamentally critical element of building a great school district. People who want to be here, going in and talking to the literacy coach and meeting other curriculum specialists throughout the day, they showed a real passion for their work with Hill for Literacy. They showed a real passion for the things that they were doing, and you could see it in the artifacts that were hanging on the walls, that I was able to read various things that really showed how the district is working to make sure that they're staying on target, that they're doing the best they can to really raise the bar for their students. And I think those are some of the really critical things. When you walk around the schools with Mr. Federico and the other principals that I was with today, that they know students' names, that they're engaging them on names. When you see a student at Riverside School, sorry, it's been a long day. When you see a student at Riverside School that, you know, she's running down the hall with a big smile on her face, and it's, her name's Sophia, and she's the, basically the Mayor of Riverside, and she's an amazing little, little student that's just really brought a big smile to my face. And meeting students and, you know, starting to go to get to know their names. And that's something that I saw throughout this entire district today. Talking with teachers, that they really want to see someone come in to build trust. They want someone who's going to be a partner to build trust. And I'll be honest, I think that's who I am. I think if you reach out to people that I've worked with in the past through Narragansett and Bartlett High School in Medford, that people believe that when I talk to them, I'm not giving them doublespeak, I'm engaging them with humanity, and that I'm also listening. And by listening and acting, you build genuine trust. And you can really repair any rifts you have, it'll take time, but those are the things that we can do and we can achieve. So I just, how would I describe your school district? Awesome. Really phenomenal. People don't understand, as, and as I may have mentioned to many of you on the side, I've watched every single school committee meeting since last February for sure, and then I mixed in January, and I've seen people get up to the microphone and speak. You have an amazing school district, and I got to see the first glimpses of that today. You have a school district where students should be absolutely 100% proud to be in these classrooms, learning from these educators, and that we can move forward. So the opportunities and the challenges, there are great opportunities for our students at this high school and in our middle school to go through some great exploratory programs, some great core classes that have good technical expertise from teachers, and the tools to make that real. Beautiful buildings, that you've embraced the challenge head-on of really tackling diversity, equity, and inclusion, and the fact that in the, in the materials that are printed, belonging is such a cornerstone part of what this district wants to be. I firmly believe that you have to create a sense of belonging, and then students buy in. When you know students' names, as your principals do, when you know kids, who their brothers and sisters are, what their challenges are, what they might be facing at home, you're better, you're better situated as a leader to help support them and then help support their academic outcomes. The challenges that I see you face is largely a marketing and communications problem, that a comprehensive marketing and strategy plan is there. I've done my research, I've heard on the school committees about the concerns about students leaving for other schools. All right? Public schools do great work, that you don't have to pay tens of thousands of dollars a year to get elsewhere. And you can also get great education without having to go down the road for vocational technical. All right? And so those challenges, we need to really let our students know by having tour days here, by having, by having marketing materials go home, by having conversations with parents, inviting them into the school en masse. And not just inviting them into the school, but by going to community events. One of the things that I used to love doing as a principal was going to the local craft fair and setting up a school tent where I could engage with parents, I could help them with reading materials or math materials, or we could engage them in like, well, has your child ever considered an advanced placement course? We can cover your fee for you if you need for the test, and various things along those lines. So I see those as some really great opportunities for Danvers to tackle. And, you know, the challenges, it's more than just marketing communications, but it's really building a sense of positivity and rebuilding trust. When teachers bring up an issue of trust, that's something you've got to really tackle head-on, and if it, if it's not real, but it's people's perception, perception is reality. And you've got to really build a strong culture that will help support all of your strategic initiatives.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next question is from Josh.
Thanks, Peter. What metrics would you use to determine the success of a school district? So this is, that's the first part of the question. And the second part is, what would you change or improve to make Danvers a top-tier district? You mentioned that in your, in your opening.
I think one of the things that you really have to look at, and so there are several metrics. One, I think you need to look at your attrition rate, all right? Making sure that you're keeping your kids here. And by that, I also mean your special education population. And looking at how we create programs, how we create opportunities for co-teaching, and how we support initiatives to really make sure that all of Danvers students stay here, that they don't look to be unilaterally placed, or look for an out-of-district placement, or things along those lines, that we're creating opportunities for our students to be educated with their peers, which is proven by evidence and research to be the best way for students to learn. I think also making sure that you're having conversations and exit interviews, and I know about the survey data of students looking to go elsewhere. Well, how are we converting that survey data to keep our students here? How are we making sure that we're having those conversations to maintain them? I actually have experience working to keep students in a school district as opposed to going to other schools by building, and I'll just go quickly on the side, by building a program of bringing eighth graders to the high school for a full-day orientation, giving them a T-shirt, building them up for pride, giving them free tickets to all athletic events and all drama events, which gets a little challenging because drama is usually self-funding, so you've got to find money to support the drama program there. But making sure that you're giving kids a real sense of what their schools can do by having your athletes, your theater students, by having your DECA students go to the middle schools and sell their great high school, and making sure that parents know what is available to them. So those are some of the metrics. I would also say looking at assessment data. All right? Looking at our teacher data and teach point, looking at various data points to build a comprehensive picture of where students are. I would look to build a data team to really make sure that we're looking at the various points of data that our students are doing from ST Math. All right? MCAS is a one-and-done. All right? By the, by the time you analyze that data, it's really a postmortem. So what are the internal assessment systems, homegrown or otherwise, that we can use to really inform our practice, build on our strategic plans, and really change where we're moving from? To really get to what would I change or improve to make Danvers a top-tier school district, despite all the research that I've done and the visit today, what I would need to do is I would need to bring together a team of individuals. I would need to get the right people around the table to have these conversations, for us to have a comprehensive look. I, as a leader, could not do this work alone. I would need to bring in members of the school committee, members of the community, members of the teaching staff, members of our instructional aides, parents, students, to understand, like, what needs to be changed and what needs to be improved, and what should never be changed because that's part of who we are. I'm a firm believer, though, that we need to really take comprehensive looks at what we're doing in education, and we need to have the right people around the table, and by the right people, I mean an inclusive group of people who really can understand and take a comprehensive look at district, at district systems and structures, and make sure that they are functioning for the best interests of our students, to make sure that they're functioning for the best interests of our educators. And then by there, you're able to build a larger Danvers community that really builds on and believes in their schools in a passionate way.
Thank you. So Robin, you are up next.
So this is a little bit wordy, but I know you have in front of you. So how do you keep your committee informed? In particular, what is your strategy around issues that are your responsibility, but where the school committee may have an interest? What has been their response and feedback?
So I actually have really extensive experience in this. We have a really invested school committee in Medford right now, and I was very fortunate at Narragansett to have a school committee with some people who'd been on the committee for 30 to 40 years. And some are still serving on that committee. And I firmly believe that even though the issues may be my responsibility, the reality is, is that your parents, your community members, you're more than just school committee members. And why is that important? Well, because when constituents come to you, you should be well-informed of what's going on. So I believe in giving phone calls and confidential email updates to the school committee. I believe that my phone should always be on for you and to be able to have conversations. And, you know, it may be a text message to the group or to the individual because we don't want to violate open meeting law, but it would be a text message to the individuals to say, "Hey, we need to have a quick conversation, I want to make you aware of something." I believe that an aware school committee is a really well-informed school committee who can help us along the way. And they may have suggestions, even though it's not necessarily the operations of the school and may stray outside of governance, but I believe that by having these conversations, we're going to be able to build a really strong feedback moving forward. And in my experience, this will be the short part of this answer, the response and the feedback has been really positive. They enjoy being informed, they enjoy knowing, and they definitely don't like being surprised. And nor should they be.
Thank you.
Yep.
What role do you think the public schools have in addressing the increasing mental health issues among young people, and what ideas do you have to address these issues? By context, we all know that even before the pandemic, these issues were becoming increasingly apparent, and certainly since the pandemic and the school closures, it's a tremendous area of concern for a lot of us.
Yes. Mr. Crane, thank you for the question. I really appreciate it because this is definitely a problem. Robin and Alice were at the first interview, and they got to hear me speak about this. And just quickly, I'd like to say that my amazing wife is a licensed clinical social worker, an LICSW, and worked in schools for a long time. And so I've been able to see this not only as a school principal, as an assistant principal, as a district leader, I've been able to see this mental health crisis at the forefront, even at home. And I really believe that kids cannot learn if their Maslow's hierarchy needs are not being met at the base levels. And we have to make sure that we are providing our students with the appropriate supports to really address the mental health issues that they're facing. As I said in my previous interview, for those of you who weren't there, I firmly believe that cell phones, social media, and the unfettered access for many of our youth is contributing in a, in a deleterious manner that cannot be understated. I believe that schools and districts have a responsibility to bring in speakers or to train staff to speak to parents about the, the unfettered access that these devices are causing problems when it comes to bullying, when it comes to seeing things online that they shouldn't see at a young age, and when it comes to interacting with people that they probably should never interact with at any age. And, you know, cell phones aren't the ultimate evil. Since I started in educational leadership in 2008, I've been a firm believer that adjustment counselors are a core of who we are. I have, as a leader, faced several students' passings directly connected to the mental health crisis. And when you lose a student, it changes you, and it makes sure that you are addressing things differently. And, you know, as an interim principal, I had to make a very difficult decision to move on from a very long-term educator because I needed to shift the model from guidance at a middle school to hiring clinical social workers. And, you know, despite unfortunately only being a few years away from retirement, the need presented itself to make sure that we were providing the supports for our students, that specifically, how were we providing, how were we providing our students what they needed? The ideas that I have to really address this issue, and so what role do schools have, I want to get direct there, we are not mental health organizations, but we have to provide triage services to make sure that we are supporting students and hopefully getting them to where they need to be. There are now 25 centers across the Commonwealth that have been opened, and a, if I, if I could look at my Twitter, I could give you the phone number, but that you can call and get mental health services. I encourage people to seek that out in this behavioral mental health crisis that we are in. So schools have a responsibility to make sure that we're training our students and educating them on how to act appropriately, on how to access their skills, on how to really problem-solve through a mental health crisis that they may be facing, to realize, like, there are various coping skills and strategies that we can teach to students through morning meeting, all right, through, I just had a brain blank, I apologize, I'll come back to it. And, but to really be able to address those. One of the best things that I've, that I've seen is training staff in mental health CPR. That's a three-half-day situation. And then there's a book published by Rebus Associates that is endorsed by Castle on Social Emotional Learning in the Classroom is the title. And doing book studies on those books and other books like them is really part and parcel to making sure that we're training our staff to be able to triage before even the school social workers and other clinicians in the building can really support them. Zones of regulation, that's what I wanted. Zones of regulation for our elementary students. Sorry, it was on the tip of my tongue, but really making sure that we're engaging with zones of regulation. And then one of the work that, one piece of work that I've done involved Medford and really dove off the high dive into this, and did as a principal at Narragansett, was bringing restorative practices, restorative circles, restorative chats to schools to be able to really work on that. And as a teacher leader, I led the peer mediation efforts at Arlington High School. And I believe that those types of programs where you bring in peer mediators and you make students leaders, you're able to help diffuse situations and you're able to help students work through problems with their peers.
Thank you. Gabe, you are up.
All right. Describe a time when you faced a DNI issue at your school. What was the issue and how did you address it?
So as a principal, one of the things that I faced was when I first entered as a high school principal, we were on notice to participate with DESI in the Rethinking Student Discipline modules because we had disproportionality and exceptionally high suspension rates. And those suspension rates were of students of color. And when you have black and brown students being suspended disproportionality, being suspended in a disproportional manner, what you're doing is you're restricting their access to education, and you're further putting students who may already be in a disadvantaged state because they may not have had the best support, so the best education, or those types of situations. What, what we really needed to do was, we needed to look at our handbook, which basically, for some reason, completely circumvented the due process rights of students, and for situations like vaping were listed as automatic suspensions for two days. So if a student vapes, we would send them home to vape more at home, as opposed to being in school, getting counseling, getting their education, being supported by a community that cares about them. And not that their home doesn't care about them, but the school should be their true safety net. It should be the place where, when they walk in the door, they feel warm, they feel supported. And so that was a true issue of, the diversity piece was that we were targeting a diverse population implicitly, like, there wasn't a, there wasn't a way out of this. There was no equity in the issue because it was a blanket, this is what it's going to be. And instead of including students, we were excluding them. So what we did was we made, and it was very difficult for staff, I'll be honest, but we made a decisive decision, myself and assistant principal, to change that in the handbook and bring it before school committee and start the year without that in practice. And we were able to start to quickly reduce suspensions because what that did was, it automatically, just on the issue of vaping as an example, it automatically put you in an argument with students that could then escalate, and then, well, now you're insubordinate, so we're going to have another day. And then a student's out for three days. And so it really makes sure that you look at the structural inequities and the systemic problems that foster and continue to cause these issues. If I can, I'll add another DEI issue at our school is, you know, we've been doing a lot of work on professional development for faculty and staff to make sure that they are well-informed about how important the DEI work that we're doing is, and to make sure that it's a sense of belonging. And we partnered with some outside organizations, and we're doing large 500, 600-plus Zooms at the height of the pandemic, which, in case you know anything about adult professional learning, might be the absolute worst way to do any type of learning, especially around DEI. And when we were doing this in Medford, the reason why we started this work was after the George Floyd murder, we had a number of students come forward and say, "We've faced issues," all right, "in our past, we want them addressed." We established a race equity task force, we started using that task force to look at the professional development that we needed to offer, we did an equity audit of our human resources department to start, and will continue that work. We have partnered with TNTP through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's Teacher Workforce Diversification Program and the monthly webinars that they have. This is our second year participating in that because I really want to have a robust cohort of people trained to be able to understand how we're going to recruit a diverse workforce to work with our students. And then finally, that professional development that I initially mentioned, well, what we did was we realized that what we did initially didn't work, so we went back to the drawing board. And instead of bringing people from, in from the outside, myself and other members of the senior leadership team and other members of the high school admin, I'm sorry, of the district leadership team across the district, we have about 40 district administrators in Medford, we sat down and we figured out, how are we going to deliver for the November 8th Professional Development Day, a professional development that inspires people, that makes them feel fulfilled, and really opens the door to conversations? We created a multimedia presentation that included videos, reading case studies, and really looking at the work that we had to do. And we were able to really, we got amazing positive feedback because we took those 40 administrators, paired everybody up, created 20 groups across the district, and we're able to take our staff of about 550 to 600 participating in that day, and we were able to break them up into groups of fewer than 20 people or so. And we were able to go and have conversations with them one-on-one. We were able to build trust. We were able to work through the issues on these very challenging topics. But it started by doing the work and walking the walk. And I'm a firm believer that I'm someone who has the agency and the ability to help lead this work because of who I am, where I've been, and the ability to identify problems where they are and to bring people together to help collaboratively solve them. Now, I just want to say that work around DEI is complex. And but just because it's complex, we can't shy away from it. And we must embrace it. And we must do it because it's for the greater good of our students in our school district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alice?
Thank you. Tell us about a time you have faced conflict within your district or school. Take us through how you dealt with it and what you learned.
Thank you, Alice, for the question. I really appreciate it. I'll say this much. My first year being a principal was an interesting year. As I've shared the story with others, I was a high school principal. And my first day ever working in schools, I had worked as a marketing director for an internet company in 2000. The marketing, the internet world really kind of fell apart. And my father, God rest his soul, he came downstairs one day, he's like, you're not just sitting on the couch. You're going to sign up to sub or you're finding a job. And that really started my educational life. Education was the family business. My mother's a teacher, aunts, uncles. One of my uncles is a principal in a neighboring district. Why do I share that? Well, because the superintendent non-renewed the middle school principal. And my only experience in middle school was working as a substitute for one day at a middle school in Lynn. And I walked out of there being like, wow, those kids have a lot of energy and feeling like, I'm never going back to middle school. And then one day, the superintendent non-renewed the beloved and well-respected principal of the middle school. And her next stop was to walk down the hall and see me. And what I didn't know was that her conversation with the staff had been, the elementary schools are here, the high school's here, and there's a dip in the middle. And so she was assigning the high school assistant principal, who had never had any experience in middle school, to lead them. And so there was natural conflict there. There was a natural lack of trust that I knew what I was doing, that who are you to tell us how a middle school should run? And in reality, I didn't tell people. What I did was I listened. I listened to hear what they had to say. I listened to what their problems were. It was clear that that year is an interim. I wanted to make sure that we became a model for other middle schools across the state. That we sent out teams across the Commonwealth to other five-through-eight middle schools, one of which was Lynnfield Middle School, all right? To go and find and data mine them for their best practices, to understand what they were doing that we could do, even though we were a poor rural school district. What could we do? And I only went on one of the visits, all right? I only went on one because I didn't want to dominate the conversation. I wanted people to come back and bring me the ideas and then have us sit around a table and have conversations. And those conversations, over about a two-and-a-half-year period, led, as I said earlier, to us becoming one of only two Level One middle schools in all of Worcester County. It was because of the power of the team and by listening. And I made a lot of mistakes that year, all right? I faced challenges. I faced five specific challenges that year, all right? That I spoke to other principals about, and they were like, I've been doing this job for 15 or 20 years, and I've never had to face one of those. And some of those I addressed earlier in this meeting. But the reality is, is that I made mistakes and I own those mistakes. I listened to the staff. I created a community by working together with others to really build a sense of like, we can do it. And then, I'll be honest, I also created a marketing and communications plan that branded, rebranded the school, moved away from a Native American warrior head to an inclusive symbol, created a chant, "It's a great day to be a..." And then the students would fill in warrior, all right? Like really built that in to the point where even now, a few years later, I still get text messages, video text messages from my old staff when the kids do, "It's a great day to be a warrior," and saying like, "It still lives." And I think that like, when you face conflict, oftentimes, our first response might be to be defensive. Our first response might be to be reactive. And I think what you might need to do is you might need to listen. You might need to pause. And you might need to get a greater understanding of what the conflict actually is before you storm back in.
Thank you. Josh, you're up.
Yep, thank you. So Peter, can you describe a specific time where you had to challenge the status quo, make a change? What was the situation? What steps did you take in order to make the change?
I'm going to go back. I'm going to give you two examples, all right? When I first arrived at Narragansett Regional High School, we had two advanced placement courses with 13 enrollments. And over the previous five years, no qualifying scores for the AP program, if you could call it an AP program. Now, what was sad was that the English and the math teachers were both the heads of the department, and they were really skilled educators. They really were. But they'd never really received any professional development other than whatever the AP training was. They'd never really received any support. And the status quo belief was, that was by some educators, who by the way, if they're listening to this, their thinking has changed, was that our kids can't do this. Our rural, poor kids, come on, Peter, they can't do this. And I challenged that head-on. I built some followership. I believe that leaders can't lead without followership. I built followership with the head of our English department and another teacher as well. And they helped me write a grant for the Massachusetts Math and Science Initiative, AP, which was controversial at the time because it provided incentives for teachers. I was able to partner with our union to work through that issue. I was able to get people to buy into going to the Professional Development, a week-long institute at Brandeis University in Waltham and Bentley. I think they also did Bentley, to really get world-class professional development. We increased our advanced placement program from two courses to eight. And in a school of about 480 kids, that's a lot. We went from 13 enrollments with no qualifying scores to about 180 enrollments, if I'm remembering correctly, with amazing qualifying scores. Our percentages were off the charts for MIMZI. They loved our data. And I think one of the best tells of this story is, to change the status quo, was we went from zero qualifying scores in AP Calculus, all right? With very few kids wanting to take that course, to getting teachers trained, providing Saturday sessions for students, okay? For them to get intensive coaching around the AP program. And then by expanding, and I'll get into one other piece in a second, to getting 15 students in AP Calculus, three years, if I remember correctly, three years after we started the program, 15 students not just getting qualifying scores, but all 15 getting fives, okay? That's the power of changing the status quo. And one of the other ways we did that was we also paid for every single student in the sophomore and junior class to take the PSAT. And then what that does is gives you access to a tool called AP Potential. And then, working with my guidance staff, we developed a form to bring those kids in and have conversations around the courses that they hit. And we lowered the bar. So they set a little bit of an artificially high bar in AP Potential, and we lowered it one standard deviation so that we actually had a bigger net to catch kids. And we brought all of those kids in. We had individual conversations with them. And we built relationships with those students to bring them on board and change that status quo. The other one, they were now flooding me, I'll give you one more, was when, similar to the AP program, we added AP Physics. And the physics teacher was like, there's no way they can take this without taking a prerequisite. Absolutely not. And I was able to convince him to go out and talk to other teachers in other schools about, no, the students can come in and take the AP Physics without having to take a prerequisite. What it would have done is it would have actually shuttered out so many students from taking it because unfortunately, a lot of high school schedules with math core are really locked up. And there aren't great opportunities for students to take passion courses that they might love. So I hope that effectively answered the question. Thank you, Josh, for that. I really appreciate it.
Good.
Robin?
So how would you hold educators at all levels accountable for delivering effective instruction?
Thank you very much for this question, Dr. Doherty. I think this is a really great question because everybody wants to talk about accountability and high accountability and how are we holding people responsible and accountable for what our students should be learning? And I'm a firm believer that you cannot have high accountability without high support. That as a leader, I am someone who believes in being in classrooms. As I've said to many people today, even though I'm the assistant superintendent, I still supervise and evaluate members of the teaching corps. Because the further you get from a class, the easier it is to start doing things that forget about keeping, one of my other core values, the sacred and sanctity of the classroom, making sure that we're shielding teachers from the noise of state, federal, and maybe even district mandates, and making sure that we're being well thought out in what we're doing. And so first, I believe it's a high level of support, making sure that we're providing great professional development for our teachers, making sure that we're providing them the resources. When I first got to Medford and powered up my computer, it booted to Windows 7, three months before Windows 7 was sunsetting. And I thought it was just because, oh, we made a makeshift office until his is ready. Okay. And I checked into it. And on my first day, there was a red light flashing in my brain because that was the mainline computer for all of our educational staff. And some had Chromebooks. But I don't believe it's respectful to give educators Chromebooks, all right? I believe that they need to be given world-class devices to support what they're doing in the classroom. If we're going to ask them to do things for our kids, you know, we need to do like Jim Sullivan is doing here in Danvers and providing them the touchscreen interactive boards, by providing them the MacBooks, by providing them those types of things. And in two districts, I've provided people in Narragansett and in Medford through an amazing, the COVID, I guess if there's any plus to it, was the windfall of cash. We were able to, in one fell swoop, hand out a MacBook to every single teacher in the Medford Public Schools. So about 480 MacBooks. You know what a MacBook costs? That's some pretty quickly adding up math. And in a poor rural school district that had never given teachers anything, all right? We were able to roll in world-class devices for them to use. And so for delivering effective instruction, I believe that we also have to make sure that we're in classrooms. We need to be not there as an I got you, but as I'm a here-for-you by providing them handwritten notes that are not just about formal observations, about informal observations, by making sure that we're supporting them when they may be struggling, by being human and offering them humanity instead of insensitivity, and by having conversations about why their practice may have slipped or what resources they might need or what professional development can we as a district provide to them as an individual. As I said in my previous interview, I really believe in the CJEIR method of very clear feedback. I believe in giving that feedback to teachers in a very balanced manner that really accentuates the positives and doesn't overwhelm them with negatives. I believe that if we do have to move teachers to improvement plans or direct-to-growth plans, we have an obligation to provide them with status check-ins in between formative assessments. And we have an obligation to not only say that they need to change or say they need to improve, we have to provide them the resources, the books, the support from teacher peers, from teacher leaders, from administrators, or outside professional development to really help them to grow. And the amazing thing about this is, the overwhelming majority of teachers do improve. And so I think that's a really critical thing, is making sure that you're in there. So first, how are you going to hold teachers accountable? You first have to provide a high level of support. If you don't provide support, how can you expect accountability? And number two, you have to be present in classrooms, in spaces. And I want to take accountability just further. When I was a principal, I would say I was at between 85 and 80% of student events, all right? Students knew that I had a standard that I expected because if I heard language or saw behavior, I would call them in to have a conversation about it. I wouldn't call them out. I wouldn't embarrass them, all right? But I would call them in. I would announce field hockey. I actually announced everything except for football because that was a sacred area for one individual. But I would announce games. I would make sure that it felt like a college or a pro atmosphere. And by being present, you can address issues. By being there, you can see what's going on. And if something's going south, you can quickly help to turn it north. And you can make the situation better. So I believe accountability by being present as well.
Thank you.
All right. I am next. In terms of building a budget and working to develop a budget, how do you work with your staff and with the school committee and advise everybody who's involved, all the stakeholders regarding budget priorities during, you know, what can be difficult times from a financial standpoint? And we've all seen ups and downs over the years. Sometimes everyone's flush, other times it gets difficult. And right now, we're kind of in inflationary environment. So how do you go about building a budget and working with the stakeholders?
Mr. Crane, thank you very much for that question. And I will say that I've been involved in more down years than up years. When the Great Recession hit in 2008, most people don't realize this. I grew up in, most people don't realize that outside of the 495 belt in north-central Massachusetts, all right? People in 2009, like the recession's over. Well, as someone who grew up in Lynn, all right? Came of age on Boston's North Shore, went to college in New Hampshire, I had a blind spot and didn't understand what rural, poor Massachusetts faces. And when in 2009, the recession was over, we really didn't see an economic turnaround until about 2015, okay? We did not see good, and I don't even call them good times, but, you know, we were forced to make draconian cuts in a way that once at a Massachusetts School Administrators Association meeting with the late Mitchell Chester, and he was taking questions, I stood up and I asked, you know, you said that we need to cut through the fat. You need to cut through the flesh. Well, we're cutting into the bone right now in some parts of Massachusetts. We're eliminating critical services for students. I don't think that you can build a budget without having a strategic plan or a well-vetted school improvement plan that has been run through a site council, that has been run through faculty and staff scrutiny, that has been shared publicly, and that those elements of your strategic plan, all right? Match your district's core values. And in advising staff, I advise my staff to give me priority-listed budgets that if I need to make cuts, all right? When summer hits or budgets don't pass or there are problems, that I am well-informed to go from the bottom up as opposed to just randomly cutting. That I've always believed that, and this started as a middle school principal, all right? The staff had never been talked to about budgets. And I started bringing them in in a departmental sense, all right? Just to understand what their needs were. And created some Google forums around budgeting that they could then input their data, give rationales, show how it was connected to a school improvement plan, and then be able to move forward with budgeting. And I think also advising the school committee is making sure that we are doing presentations, as I have seen through your school committee meetings, where almost everything is connected back to the strategic plan and those three pillars. And I think that that is fundamentally critical and is a great asset that Danvers has done that work. And making sure that as we're going through the budget, we explain where fiscal cliffs might be. This free money has been wonderful, but it's going to make for some tough decisions for many school districts along the way. And so we've tried to avoid paying for personnel. But right now, we have definitely purchased some engagement specialists and some hall monitors and some other things like that that are going to be difficult, that are going to be difficult to fund moving forward with what's on the horizon and the federal dollars going away. But I think that budget priorities have to be informed by strategic priorities. And your strategic priorities, you know, and I don't remember if I said this during my first interview, but culture eats strategy for breakfast. Your strategic priorities have to be built on a strong school culture. for breakfast. Your strategic priorities have to be built on a strong school culture or a developing school culture. Because when you're making tough decisions, if you don't have a good culture going to a great culture, it's going to be very difficult to argue in perilous times.
Thank you.
Yep.
We are back to Gabe.
How would you manage staffing in the face of changing demographic needs, specifically enrollment decline at the high school, and increasing enrollment and new classroom space at the elementary level?
Mr. Lopes, I really want to thank you for this question. And had I not gone on the tour today, I would not have really understood the space crunch, especially at the Riverside School. And so I appreciate this question because this is definitely a sensitive topic. And I know that through the Student Opportunity Act funds, you've been able to, through this year, support positions that may have to be in the future eliminated because of a population decline at Danvers High School. All right. The reality is, though, is that going back to an earlier crisis, an earlier crisis, an earlier question, the reality is, is that the mental health crisis needs more adults. It needs more people connecting with kids. It needs more people who can build relationships with students. And so that's going to lead to some really difficult conversations if we have to cut staff overall in a district because of declining enrollment and declining funds. And that's going to really lead to some tension spots. I think that one of the things is that we need to buoy the high school. We need to make sure that we're creating programs. One of the programs that I helped create at, at the middle high school that I worked at was an outdoor leadership program that was, we purchased canoes and, you know, military-grade cold gear and tents and a bus and installed a challenge course. And so students would actually have an outdoor leadership program that culminated over Martin Luther King Weekend by living in a challenge-by-choice fashion in Lake Dennison State Forest. And there were some times where it was zero degrees. But our kids, our kids were out there. They were well-supported. It was great to go visit them in the woods and to provide programs for students. What Chapter 74 programs can we look at, all right, that are not offered locally to entice students to come here? What recruiting efforts can we do to make sure that our students never want to look anywhere else? So that's one way to address enrollment decline at the high school. Also, with 150 units coming online in downtown, we're going to have greater, greater stress on our elementary schools. And so we may have to look at the flex zones and shifting lines, which I know is a potential third-rail topic for a lot of people. But having Title I teachers in hallways teaching kids elements of reading and the science of reading is very distracting. This person would have been looking at everybody running up and down that hallway, or everybody walking in between class, or who's the guy in the blue suit and the red tie, and not paying attention to his reading instruction. And what I really think is that we're going to have to look at some shifts across the district to where there is open classroom space, and what building projects are we looking at in the next, say, five years? And we can't necessarily rely on state authorities to support those because the renovations have been paused. Funding is not there because those inflationary costs that you alluded to in the previous question, Mr. Crane, really are causing a problem for many school districts across the state that are right now are in the midst of construction programs. So how would I manage staffing? Sometimes we're going to have to make those tough decisions, that staffing might need to be shifted to other buildings, or staffing may have to be temporarily reduced to bring it back. But as I said earlier in the answer, we don't want to do that because we need more adults connecting with kids. I would also say, having faced this, you want to make your cuts as far away from the classroom as possible. You want to make sure that students are the last thing being affected by budget cuts. And, you know, finding efficiencies and finding things. Also, what revenue generating programs can the school district create? And there are many districts across the state that have done this. What revenue generating programs can we create to help support our budget, not supplant, help support our budget initiatives? And finally, going back to the classroom space, I think it's looking at shifting where students are and really taking a hard look at how can we expand classroom space, or how can we really revamp some of our elementary schools to really look at, okay, what are the needs moving forward? And I think the Smith School is a model for an absolutely amazing elementary structure. Like seeing the authentic learning in just about a 45-minute to an hour visit there today, seeing kids being able to, as I mentioned earlier, partner with one another in the hallways, you know, being excited about the centers that they were doing in their math classes. Some kids doing ST math, some kids doing manipulatives, some kids one-on-one with, not one-on-one, small group with their teacher, all right, around a kidney table. Like those types of things that I saw at Riverside as well. All right. Those are the types of things that we cannot let physical space stand in the way of great teaching and provide the resources for those educators.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe that is our last question. Are there any follow-up questions that are burning with anyone that want to ask?
Nope.
No, I presume not. I had, if you guys-
You didn't like my word perilous? You didn't use it. You didn't like my word perilous? You never used it.
I-
I'm kidding. I know, but then Peter used it, so.
It was very descriptive. I love it.
There you go. You know, Chairman's prerogative. I would like to ask one quick question, if I could probably, I think it'll be a quick question, maybe not. Crisis management.
Yes.
You know what we've been through. If you read the papers at all, people know what this district went through over the last few years and even before that, unfortunately. We've had some events that could definitely be called crises. And I know in the recent weeks, I think it's fair to say you've been through that too with Medford. Just wondering how your approach to crisis management from a superintendent's standpoint?
Yeah. So I learned crisis management from my school resource officers. This was definitely something that I did not know. And my school resource officers that I've worked with, three in particular, have been amazing educators. They partnered with students. They were coaches. They had one-on-one conversations. That's just an aside, all right. But they were such integral parts of the school community. And I know that's not the case everywhere. And I know that there are a lot of people who rightly, rightfully so, at times bristle against law enforcement in schools. But in my experience, I have seen some absolutely amazing school resource officers who are educators and are a true resource. And one of the things I learned about in crisis management is, the first thing is, as the leader, you need to remain calm. Okay. You need to have your head about you, and you need to not rush in. And just as one example, I'll never forget, the first thing that I responded to as an assistant principal, I forget what it was, but a call came over the radio, and I ran to the situation. And my principal and my school resource officer, I could basically see them smiling as I rounded the corner. All right. And they were smiling because you never run into a crisis. All right. You walk, you be deliberate, and you be thoughtful. And the other thing is, is you do have to provide timely information. In a crisis, you need to be transparent. And if you can't be transparent, you need to say to the parents and constituents, we can't tell you right now, but when we can, we will tell you. And say like, everybody's okay. We're investigating. We're going through the process. We're going through the steps. Make sure that your social media accounts, that your, your connect ed messages and your other things have pre-canned messages that can be quickly tweaked and be ready to go. And that as the leader, as the superintendent, if you're willing to delegate to a principal, as the leader of the building who parents probably feel most comfortable with, make sure that you're coaching them on how to respond and be right there with them. Or as the superintendent, you step into the light and do what you need to do and provide the information for the district and for the school. And I believe that I'll build relationships in Danvers that will build for years to come. I believe that I will be connected with the community in a way that you may be surprised at because I believe that this is a vocation. I believe that this is a calling. And I firmly believe in that work, in using those types of words, I have an obligation to commit myself to this work. And when crisis hits, to be able to stand up there and accept the responsibility, or to say, we're going to fix, grow, and move on because we have great educators. I will also say that the situations that Danvers has been in and other districts, they are moments in time. And they don't define a district forever. And what you do is you implement the work that Mary Wormers has done. You implement the work that the athletic department has done. You have a principal like Mr. Federico that I've seen stand up and defend a great high school on your school committee meetings. All right. You establish communication with people so that they believe in your district and that you're going to improve, you're going to get better, and we're not going to forget this, but we're going to move forward. We're going to move forward and we will be better. We will be in advance. And I will be honest with you, I have used those articles and those letters and the trainings from the Attorney General that we just, I went to at the TD Garden to shape my practice in Medford in helping to lead our athletics department. I have anti-bias paperwork, trainings for coaches. We're implementing a, a, a captain's leadership academy and want to implement an overall leadership academy for our students to really build that muscle in our students. So that's a long answer, and I apologize.
That's okay.
It just, it really, it's really fundamentally critical and important that we lead this work and we learn from the, from the issues that other schools have gone from. If we think for a second that these issues are isolated to a few high schools, or a few middle schools, or a few elementary schools, you're sorely mistaken. Many schools are facing these issues on a daily basis. And it's how we respond that is going to really help define us moving forward. And I think that definition for Danvers moving forward is going to be one of greatness. Because I've seen you embracing the challenges and moving forward. And it's also bringing in students like Reese and Lilly, who I saw them in September, you know, bring up their issues. And it's making sure that those conversations are going on, making sure that there are superintendent advisory councils, making sure that students are involved. So when crisis hits, when you say something, people believe it. People believe you because you've never given them any reason not to believe you. So thank you. I'm sorry for-
No, no, that's okay. So it's time for closing statements. And I would like to invite you to tell us anything else that you think we need to know.
First, I want to take a moment to really thank you, the committee. I want to thank all the members of the initial screening committee. I want to take a moment to thank the faculty and staff who took time out of their afternoon to come to the afternoon session, to the parent from the Highland School, to the Highland towns who came to visit with me today, to the members of this audience who are taking time out of your evening. It really shows an investment. It shows an investment in your school district. It shows a duty to care and a duty to cherish. I am really excited for this opportunity. I really believe that my skills cultivated through my Boston College work in my master's and doctoral program, my working in a small district where principals were a true part of a central office staff, where I was heavily involved in budgets and munis and like nuts and bolts of running a district, that I've cultivated myself to a point through working with a lot of other people, through building teams, and a true collaborative effort. To any educators out there at Narragansett, Webster, and Medford, like I owe them a debt of gratitude for how they've helped me to become the leader that I am. I couldn't have done it without them. You don't make change alone. You make change as a part of a team. And I've been able to be a part of great change. And I hope it's me to help lead this district moving forward. But I want to wish you the absolute best in your deliberations and your search moving forward. And I really thank you for this opportunity.
Well, thank you. It's been extremely interesting listening to you and your passion, I think is evident in what you do. And so we really appreciate the insights that you've shared, the experiences you've shared, and your interest in working with us. I think we really do appreciate you.
Thank you.
Anything else before we, I think what we'll do is let's take a five-minute break. We'll let Dr. Cushing head on his way. I will take a minute to personally thank him for being here.
Thank you.
And then we'll come right back. We'll sit down and talk about the process a little bit.
Okay, sounds good.
Sound good?
Thank you.
All right. All right. So during the break, Dorothy Presser from the Mass Association of School Committee has indicated, and she's been very helpful to us, so we can't, can't thank you enough for the help you've given us. We appreciate it. And she's going to provide us with some information about how the voting process could go. And we'll consider that tonight and then chat about that after our interview tomorrow. And then we can let the public know exactly how that'll play out and how we'll vote. So I want to thank everybody tonight for the thoughtful questions. And, you know, hopefully, we're going to have, I can tell just by looking at the paperwork, we've got some really good candidates here. And I feel very confident about this process. Robin and Alice, thank you for pulling things together. And Gabe and Josh, thank you for, along with me, trying to figure out the right questions to ask. And so thank you all. And with that, does anyone else have anything to say before motion to adjourn?
So after tomorrow's interview, then, can we livestream just how we're going to vote? Is that a possibility? Or no? Okay.
I suspect that that's difficult only because DCAT-
Because we told them no.
Yeah, right.
Okay. Well, they'll be published in the paper. They can ask us. Okay.
And, and, you know, we can, depending on how, how we can describe the process, we can put it on the website, that sort of thing. We'll find a way to communicate it.
Okay.
All right. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Josh, you got tomorrow night's morning.
I will.
I think it took-
Thank you, everybody. Good night, Danvers.
Thank you.
A second to get going here. All right. I'm going to assume that-
I don't mind why I have a computer.
Oh, that's not-
I don't know. This is not me.
We are, welcome, Danvers, welcome to folks in the room, who are the only ones who get to see this live, actually, which is good. It's nice to see a turnout here of interested citizens. And this is the second night of our interviews for the position of superintendent for the Danvers Public Schools. We're going to start, as we always do, with our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. So night two begins. We are pleased to have candidate Daniel Bauer with us this morning or this evening. And Robin or Alice, would you like to introduce Daniel to the town?
Do you want me to? Okay. So Mr. Bauer is currently the principal of Malden, not Malden, that was my former district, sorry, from Marblehead High School. And before that, he was assistant principal in Beverly. And you're currently going for your doctorate?
Correct.
Correct. Yes. So welcome. So we're going to have 10 questions. We'll each have two questions for you. And you'll have time for an opening. Then we'll get to the questions. They're also in front of you for reference. Some of them are a little lengthy. And then a closing and time for, like, any questions you have also. And like we did last night, if anyone on the committee has like a follow-up to any of the questions, we obviously can do that, too.
Great.
So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Robin. So with that, we'll turn it over to you. Do you prefer Dan, Daniel, Mr. Bauer, Principal Bauer?
Dan is fine.
Okay. We'll turn it over to you for your opening statement.
Great. Well, thank you for having me here. So excited to be here and spent a wonderful day. I know that's a follow-up question, but just a little bit about me that you may not know. I'm originally from St. Louis, Missouri. Made my way east, where I went to school at the University of Pennsylvania. That's where I met my- That's where I met my, my beautiful wife there and we've been married 30 years. I have two children, my son Zach who's 25 and my daughter who's 22. My daughter's a senior at Ithaca College at physical therapy. Actually did not get into education the traditional way. After I graduated from college, went into business for a year, then decided that wasn't for me and got into coaching college football, went back to my alma mater. And then got into small college football and then eventually made my way to Tufts University where I made a transition to receiving a master's degree there and working, student taught at Wakefield High School. And from that point, opportunities at Masconahm and from there. So I've been in public education for 22 years. It's my 22nd year. Seventeen years I've been in administration. So I've really had the opportunity to see a district through a school lens in many different ways and many different capacities. I think we are the sum of all of our parts. So I've had a lot of experience working in district in terms of budget, in terms of curriculum, teaching and learning, assessments, safety, and all aspects that are important toward being the superintendent of schools. So I feel very blessed with some great opportunities that I've had. And I think bringing to Danvers, my leadership style is visible. I feel very strongly about being visible because that, that in itself shows, I think, those that need to see the superintendent, that he is present, he is approachable and empathetic. I listen and I like to problem solve. And I think most importantly, develop a team and take a collaborative approach. So in terms of that piece, I think it all comes back to student focus, what are your core values? I think when making decisions and looking at what's best, taking that lens, I think if you keep that as your core value, you can't go wrong because that's why we're here is for the benefit of our students. And also, too, trying to develop the schools to be the best they can be so as an important part of our community. So, that's in a nutshell. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Our first question comes from Alice.
Thank you, Dan. So you have alluded to the busy day that you had today. So after today's walkthrough, how do you describe our school district? And what opportunities and challenges do you think we face?
So today's walkthrough was awesome. It started off, coming in and the person at the front desk greeted me by my name. So I felt welcomed right away. The schools are in beautiful shape, they're well-kept, you could see there's a lot of pride in the buildings. Everybody to a T was very welcoming and it seemed to me it was genuine. It wasn't just because I'm a candidate superintendent, they really, you could see the pride in just meeting the central office team today and describing how long many of them have lived in this community, their children have gone to school in this community, those have moved to this community and you could just see that pride and how hard they're working in the teamwork that's within the central office team, I think is awesome. And then having an opportunity with Mr. Federico to walk the building and see the great things in the classrooms, that was exciting for me. The teachers were very welcoming and, you know, it's hard to interrupt the lesson, but was able to go in and see many, many great things happening. The students were awesome. And then had an opportunity to meet with the central office team, actually the administrative team, the larger group, and really found that to be a group of individuals who truly care about Danvers Public Schools. And just knowing how hard the work is, they seem like a very collaborative group and very exciting that the work that they're doing. And then from there, transition to the middle school, had a chance to walk through and again, just saw great interactions. I saw students that really were engaged, I saw students that seemed to be excited to be there. And then made my way to two elementary schools, Riverside and the Smith School. And certainly, it was a lot of fun. It really was for me. Just to see the teachers working hard and at Riverside, it was around lunchtime, I guess they've been at indoor recess for four days, so all that energy was pent up, but they really got out and they were running the halls, but you could see the staff working and supporting one another. Then at the Smith, you know, right before dismissal, you look out the window, you see the snow and that's distracting for anybody, but the students when they're working and able to get in. And I do have to say that I did do the gritty. So, I don't know if that counts against me, but the principal asked and I did it and so, anyway, I'm sorry.
Powers, yep, okay.
Right. But I think, you know, in terms of opportunities, and the reason I'm here tonight, and I'm fortunate to be here tonight, but through my research and looking at Danvers schools and knowing people that work in district and knowing people connected, it just seems like people genuinely care, right? You have a staff that are vested in the schools and there are many, many different parts. There's been a lot of hard work that's been done in the areas of curriculum and social, emotional, and DEI. You see that happening. So there are a lot of really good parts that are there. So there are many opportunities there to keep the work going and honor the work that's been happening, but keep moving it forward. And certainly challenges, you know, as anything else, I think each one of the schools has a challenge that most high schools or middle or elementaries are facing. And certainly, when you get to the high school, you see the different areas where teachers are trying many, many different innovative strategies in the classroom. And I saw some really neat things in the engineering room. I know they were prepping for midterms, but you can see the materials. I went into the, what used to be the wood shop, the tech area, and they're working hard in there. And certainly, understanding that, you know, how can we make sure that we are providing opportunities for our students that are more than just what they may be getting within the typical traditional instructional setting. And I saw that and you see more opportunities for that, too. In terms of the middle and the elementaries, the elementaries, you could see that you have the teams really working hard together with the teachers and the support staff. And certainly, that piece is something, and certainly it looks like Riverside has a lot of students in there and they were running all over. And the Smith is well in terms of the support staff that's working really hard. So I can see that, that is an area to keep working and pushing to support the needs of our students. So then I got an opportunity to meet with the staff and I found it remarkable that at 3:00 on a Friday, I wasn't sure anybody would be there, right? And there was a great group of teachers that were there and you can, and I thought that was impressive. They asked very good questions, had an opportunity to meet with the union, union leadership. And, you know, they're all looking for the same thing. They're looking for culture, they're looking for trust, they're looking for working together and collaboration. So it was very exciting to meet with those groups and then had a nice session with the public before this meeting. So, it was a very busy day. I was able to get home and get a sandwich and had the Domino's Pizza, it was served in elementary schools today, but it was a nice day.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Josh, you are up next.
Great. Thanks, Dan. What metrics would you use to determine the success of a school district? And then what would you change or improve to make Danvers a top-tier district in Massachusetts?
So, metrics are as simple as standardized testing scores in terms of enrollment numbers, in terms of success after high school, where are students going? And also, the rate, the percentage of students that actually succeed when they get to that second level. I think those are metrics that are, are very common and certainly ones that, when you look at that piece, I think you can break them all down and realize that it's not just the outcome of the high school, realizing that it's elementary and middle school that contributes. Our students, when they leave, when they graduate, they're products of the whole system. So the work that happens at the elementary carries over to the middle and the high school. So the alignment is critical. So the curriculum work that is being done, the vertical alignment there must continue to happen and move forward, right? So when students make their way into the middle school, the expectations are very clear for what would be, would be for a successful transition into the middle school, right? So there has to be cohesion between the elementaries and the middle and also with the middle to the high school understanding and being able to create opportunities where those teams are able to, to meet, right? So they understand and can help with that transition. Certainly consistency within the elementary schools is important in terms of the curriculum and the school improvement plans, which I see, that's nice, they're really focused in and there's very good consistency with that. Because again, once they get to the high school piece, then, again, it's the product and certainly being able to revise and refine those items. So in terms of the strategies involved with MCAS testing at the elementary, looking at the strategies and looking for opportunities, breaking down the item analysis and reviewing the curriculum, how that aligns. And also, keep in mind when they, when they move their way up to high school, being able to offer some standardized testing time that may be able to provide environments, for example, if you offer the PSAT for, for all students. That's a nice opportunity that the students have to take a standardized test that might not necessarily take it, so they could take it earlier to work on the practice, get the feedback for that to build for future success. So I think those are all related. And I guess when you get into the postgraduate, successfulness and how well they do, not just getting into college, but being able to succeed once they get there, I think that piece is an important statistic that, again, gets into what has happened through the experience of creating the relevancy within the high school environment. So they're able to take on the rigors of, of post-high school work, right? And creating opportunities within the high school that are, that are relevant and match where they're at. So creating strong pathways so students can plan and get to where they need to be. So if they have a pretty good idea of what area to go through the pathway for life after high school, they'll have a better chance for success. So I think those are other areas that are important. The offerings that you have at the high school, ensuring that they are providing a challenging curriculum, right? That meets the needs and certainly meets the profile, but also being able to provide, my opinion, all students the opportunity for success. Look at the interventions, how are those going? How are your tier-one interventions? They match up where you're providing students opportunities so that they have, that they have a better chance for success. So that it's not just the, the high flyers, which they'll do well and we need to support and have strong offerings for them, but we need to ensure that we provide those, again, tier-one and tier-two if necessary supports to lift and provide an equitable educational experience for all students. And that in itself will raise the profile, too, right? We're not talking just the top, we're talking the whole group, so.
Could I ask a follow-up question to that?
Sure.
So, Dan, you, thank you for your entry plan. And I think this kind of connects a little bit to the metrics, so I didn't know if you kind of wanted to walk through, I mean, it's very detailed, but maybe connect it a little bit to like the metrics piece.
Sure.
It might be helpful for the audience, too, because I know they don't have it in front of them.
Right. So in terms of the metrics piece, I think an important part is being able to review, obviously, and part of an entry plan not only is to meet people and develop relationships with the stakeholders, but looking at the artifacts that are available. So being able to review curriculum, be able to review the scope and sequence, to see where the alignment is or opportunities to create alignment. Be able to go through and see what practices are there in terms of the early childhood part, what's happening with the literacy programming, what's happening with the writing program, the math programming, and look for those components there because again, it does start at the elementary level. It's not just secondary. So it has to match and that's where the start is. And we know if students perform at a strong level at the elementary, they'll have a greater chance for success, which will then increase the metric as well. And certainly, going into special education, looking again, talking about how we're supporting our students. And that kind of went into earlier when I was talking about, and tier-one is for all students, but looking at what we're doing in terms of our programming to create, I think, consistency within that and providing, making sure that we provide support so they have enough support so they can do the work that needs to be done.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm going to ask a quick follow-up, too, which is how should a, a community, you know, what's the importance of MCAS? What should a community be looking for in terms of the MCAS scores? What's its utility? You know, how do you focus on that? How much do you focus on it?
So, the MCAS is a snapshot where the students are, right? It's not the end-all and be-all. I think it's, it's a collective picture of all the other metrics that we talked about. But it does give a good snapshot in terms of, that can be aligned with the state, right? We can see what other districts are doing, what our district is doing, performance within the grade levels, and you can even pull out data even further in terms of how are our subgroups doing as well? Are students that are high needs and special education plans 504s and such, economically disadvantaged? So you can look at those metrics to see, well, then that kind of ties back into the practices that we're doing and seeing, are we, have we made improvements? What's the student growth percentage? And if it's not where it needs to be and if there's some disproportionality there, we can go back and review our practices to see, again, if we're utilizing the curriculum that we have, are there some areas in there that can be improved? Are the practices, such as I know you're using the formative assessment cycle and looking at that, and how well is that really going? You know, that's a lot of work and that's really awesome to be able to do that because you can gauge where students are and recalibrate instruction. So I think that is, is a piece of the puzzle, is the MCAS. It's not the end-all and be-all, but it does provide a snapshot. So if you look at this year's data, right, and if you look at a category such as the meet, meets or exceeds expectations, you know, many schools have dropped. They dropped across the state and we know that's coming off the heels of the pandemic. But that data itself is fine. But then what are the educators or experts doing in terms of breaking down the item analysis and looking for areas of opportunity to improve, such as in, in English language arts? Maybe there is something in terms of the writing that wasn't aligned well in the curriculum that could be improved upon, right? For example, in the math programming, look at the scope and sequence, possibly, right, maybe geometry was an issue, I'm thinking secondary, and maybe some of those items can be brought in earlier before the MCAS testing in March. So there are strategies there that can be done as leverage that, again, match everything. So it's not the end-all and be-all, but it is a marker. And again, you can, you can benchmark that across other districts throughout the state. You can also benchmark that into per pupil spending and there's a lot of other categories when you get into the accountability piece as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Robin, you have the next question.
I have the next one. So how do you keep your, I cannot speak to it. How do you keep your committee informed? In particular, what is your strategy around issues that are your responsibility, but where the school committee may have an interest? What has been their response and feedback?
So I think it's, it's critical, the relationship that we have, that you're informed, right? My job is to take care of the operations of the district, but obviously, making sure that when I, issues occur or items that are coming up, that I have the forethought to being very clear with my communication in terms of this is coming up, this is what is happening, and this is what's on the radar, right? Nobody likes to be surprised. My, my mantra is no surprises and that, that is a two-way street, right? So I think that's my responsibility as I'm managing the district, is to be able to keep the school committee informed of items that are coming up in terms of where we are, when you get into budgetary, when you get into program of studies, when you get into the curriculum piece, when you get into testing and all that, right? And obviously, certainly if there are areas of interest, right? So whatever that area of interest may be, certainly being able to provide information that can provide insight to you as the committee, right? Because it could be a budget implication or something, policy implication that, that needs to be taken care of. And I think that is important, that we have that level of communication. Again, I wouldn't want you to be surprised. You certainly don't want to hear, pick up the, from a phone call, something is going on that, that is critical. It's my job to inform you as I'm working through whatever needs to be done within the district.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any, in your, like, position as a principal now where you've had to kind of, could you give an example where you had to keep, you know, people informed, I guess? Like whether it was the school committee, even though you were principal or maybe a superintendent? Just to kind of like walk us through, I guess, something?
Yeah, so in typically, in typical fashion, I have a weekly update, just a very simple communication. I try to be clear and concise, parents are very busy, but just listing the items of interest within the high school community, highlighting anything that is upcoming. And certainly, that provides parents an opportunity, providing opportunity within that update of our school counseling area. So if you're, if you're a parent of seniors, you understand what's happening. If you're a parent of freshmen, you understand the transition programming on that piece. That's a regular. I would, as a superintendent, have a weekly update that would come up, that would highlight positivity within the district and, and really expect by principals to have a weekly update for the school communities that I think is important so parents can plan and know what's happening within their school community. But the superintendent would set the tone for a weekly communication that would go out of a high level of, again, the positivity and important items that are coming up. And I would lead that with earlier, before the weekend, and then have the principals do that, right, on that Sunday, more than likely. You're welcome.
All right. Any follow-ups? All right. So the next question is mine. And context, I think we've all seen an increase in mental health issues with students, anxiety, school, I won't call it school phobia, but you know what I mean, difficulty being in the school environment. So what role do you think that the public schools have in addressing the increasing mental health issues among our young people? And what ideas do you have to address those issues?
Well, it is our responsibility because if students are not in a good place, the likelihood of learning is very little, right? As well as our professionals in the building, too. So our students reflect what's happening in the greater community. So if students are struggling with mental health issues, it's our obligation to provide supports to ensure that they have what they need within the school. So it's as simple as analyzing, you know, is it a situation where, do you have enough staffing? Do you have enough clinicians within your building? Social workers, would that be helpful? Do you have enough aides in that piece? Would there be helpful to have awareness and training within the staff, right? In terms of working with that piece and being able to get a student who might be in crisis to the support they need? I think that is is critical, that we understand that part. And also, being able to talk as a staff, right? And and really, the the piece of mental health, our students, it's it's, they understand mental health, they understand issues, particularly our high schoolers, you know? And being able to provide programming within your health classes, that could be some outreach within mental health. And I've seen that within the high school level, but that certainly can move down into the middle, elementary, different age appropriate levels, right? For awareness, I think that's important. And also too, you know, it's it's a community issue. So, you know, for example, in Marblehead, we have the Mental Health Task Force, and we're able to have conversations. We've had a couple community conversations about, one was grief and and loss. We had also a panel and a discussion on substance awareness. So and I know that's not mental health per se, but having avenues in the building as a community to take it on that way. Because again, the schools have that that burden as itself. As I said, students need to be in a good place in order to learn. But it is also a community issue too, so being able to have that partnership can go a long way. To ensure there are resources within the school and also to be able to, you know, address the issues that are happening with our young students. Being able to look at what resources and certainly, programming we can bring into the school that's appropriate and can address mental health and be supportive. Educational programming certainly could bring in speakers and lecturers as well, and interactive items too. And also, you can get some student driven items too, because don't be afraid to lean into your students as well, because they certainly can have some ideas. For example, the high school may create a mental health awareness club, right? That's very easy that they could do, I'm sure. They they may have one here, I know that that's common, that students do things where they they collaborate because they're interested, they want to help others, and that's another level of support.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
And Gabe.
Hey, Dan. Describe a time when you faced a diversity, equity, and inclusion issue at your school. What was the issue and how did you address it?
Yeah, not not to give away all the specifics, I have to be careful, but certainly a social media post that came out, and it ran like wildfire, right? And and that came out and connected back to our school community. So the number one thing was certainly getting that and being able to consult with my team. And so the superintendent also communicated with our chief of police as well, to tie it in together, and then be able to put out a communication in a timely manner that addresses that piece and really understate, be able to to state and point out that this isn't acceptable. This is not what we're about. This is not our mission, and be able to put in our mission, this is what our mission is. And then obviously, from that piece, that opens up, right, a lot of dialogue. What's going on, what happened, who did what? And and certainly creates a lot of tension for sure, but you have to address it. You have to go right at it. You have to identify what that is, but you have to be careful and work together. That's why it's important when things like that come up, you do, depending on the nature of it, work work with your police and work with your team, right? That's something that you can't take on alone, something that requires teamwork because of the complexity of the issue. And then falling back to, how is this impacting our students? And what do we need to do to support our students in this piece? Bringing in a speaker to work with our students, bringing in some support for our staff, and then being able to work with students that were most affected by the social media post, right? And then being able to create something that would be educational, moving out forward, that could particularly help students that might be connected with a situation like that. I try to be a little general, I know, because of the sensitivity, but it it's certainly, it's unfortunate, but I think being direct, being honest and upfront, providing the information that you can, right? Because you're always balancing that piece of the information that gets there so people understand that that's not acceptable. Because I think that's important for all students and staff and community to feel like they're safe. So being able to ensure that safe environment is to be able to state that that's not acceptable and that's not what we're all about, and this is what we are about. And then being able to follow up with whatever supports are necessary to help those that are impacted by that event. And then look for not the one off. Again, look at the work that we're doing to see, like, how can we sustain this? So items like this hopefully don't happen again, but to ensure that our students feel safe and supported and have the tools to navigate through a difficult situation. Thank you. You're welcome.
All right.
I think my next question is probably a really good follow up to that. So can you tell us about a time that you faced conflict within your district or your school? And then take us through how you dealt with it and what you learned?
Yes, you know, I don't know if you would say that COVID was conflict, but two years of it. I think you're looking for more of a specific issue that occurred. Yeah, we we faced a pretty good issue within our school, not a good issue at all. One where there was an issue and we had a student walk out, right? And I thought that was probably the lowest point of my professional career, right? I felt so badly for our students that were impacted by an issue that occurred and not being able to provide the support they needed so they felt that it was important that their voices were heard, and there was a walkout at our school. And from that piece there, in looking for ways that we could give our students voice, how can we turn this situation into a positive? How can we provide them opportunities for growth? And how can I, as the principal, learn? And how can our staff and support learn from the situation so that way our students feel supported, so something like that would never happen again, where they have avenues and voice, where we can work together? And there were positives that did come out of that, there were. A lot of positive, in fact, a few of these items are still sustained to this day, which I feel very good about. But I think at that piece too, that's where the empathy, right, and being steady and being able to show that you are student first, to work through a very adverse situation. Because I think that shows that you not only care, but you want to make the situation better so that students feel safe and they feel supported.
Could I ask a follow up? So what did you learn personally through that?
So I learned personally that communication is key and being able to be timely with that piece and being able to provide timely communication to our staff, but also being able to to ensure that there's a vehicle for student voice within our school community. And really reflective on that piece and not make assumptions that there are a few things going on that might be voiced, but really looking into it. But also be on the mind of a cycle of reflection, right? Looking at analyzing how things are, just not make assumptions like, things seem to be okay. Well, you can't do that, right? Because if you're sitting still and with a status quo, you're falling behind. And that's not fair to those that care, that you care about.
Thank you. I have a follow up question to that. Okay, so you talked about conflict and, you know, what you learned from it. So thinking about, obviously, as a superintendent, you're going to, you're going to hear a lot from the community. So I guess, how like, how would you handle feedback from like stakeholders? And possible, yeah, as a superintendent?
Yeah, so.
Or the importance, I guess, of that, like, what would you do with that information? And how would you handle it?
Well, I think it's important that people feel they've been heard, right? Because feedback can take many vehicles, whether it be a survey or a direct conversation, which I like focus groups, individual meetings. But how is that feedback taken and how can that be utilized for potential growth, right? And not all feedback necessarily might lead to growth, but I think it's being honest and and upfront with where that is going and being able to listen. And if it's something that would require attention and could possibly bring change, being able to involve those stakeholders within that and being honest about that part. You know, a number of the changes that have occurred in our school was from feedback, from students, from staff. And and I think that's important, that you take the feedback and you can leverage it to be positive with that. But again, again, it's working through the feedback, because there's all different, different items of feedback. And if it's feedback that's not quite matching the alignment of goals and and strategies or strategic plan, being honest with that piece, but not turning that person away so, because they may have future feedback that we would be important, right? So I think that is that is critical. So you want people to bring feedback, right? But you don't want to shut them off if it's feedback that may not work at that particular time. But you could certainly leverage that individual later for potential feedback. So you want to create that relationship where they feel like it's valued, they're being heard, they're listened to, because we don't always agree on everything, right? Things may not always match according to where things need to be. But I think, again, it goes into that piece of being approachable and being able to be honest and take the feedback and work from there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, let's see. Josh, is it Josh next?
Yes, me. Okay, Dan, think about from your last two positions, either as assistant principal in Beverly or in principal currently in in Marblehead. Could you describe a specific time where you had to challenge the status quo to make a change? And then what was the situation, what steps did you take in order to make that change?
Yeah, so I will say the status quo. I got a question ahead of you, Josh. Sorry. The status quo, so we remove study halls from a high school, right? So the status quo is that study hall provides an opportunity for students to study, right? To make up work, particularly with an over scheduled student, right? That that are involved in many extracurricular activities, the study hall time of the day, that that is a nice time for them, but it doesn't match time on learning. It it can't always be as leveraged effectively as possible. I saw as as principal that, you know, whenever there would be behavioral issues, a lot of times would be during that unstructured time in study halls. So how can you then bring a change to something that is like, well, study halls are very important? So it's it's going through that involving group of stakeholders, getting feedback, feedback from students in terms of, you know, how are they using that time? Getting feedback from the teachers and such, how is that time being utilized? And realizing that, yeah, the time itself, it is important, right? It's 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 more important than maybe is perceived, right? Again, not making assumptions, but asking those questions and getting that feedback. And then taking that from a part where you can take the study hall out, but what can go in its place? So we developed a magic block, a win block or U block, that is a common time. If we could build that into our schedule where teachers are available, students can then self select where they go to utilize that time. You know, that develops not only relationships with students and teachers, but empowers students to pick an area where they may need some assistance. With an over scheduled student that may not be able to stay after school for extra help, they have that time built in, or if they've been out, they have an opportunity to make up a test, make up work. But the status quo would have been easy just to keep it as is, because that's what has happened. But it wouldn't have happened if we didn't involve the stakeholders to get that information, because it's easy to dismiss, well, study halls, that's when problems are happening. No, it actually was a valuable time, but how can we leverage it to be useful within the schedule that can meet time on learning requirements in the sense of having interactions and direct interactions with the teacher, right? A teacher that they may need some extra help again. And I think by doing that piece and then being able to communicate what's happening and run a pilot with that, we ran a pilot magic block for a period of time. But it also wouldn't have happened if my staff wasn't empowered to take the lead on a lot of this. Taking the lead on going out and researching, what is a win block, a U block? What is the best use of an advisory? Because it came about that too. Being able to empower the staff so they felt that they can bring those strategies back, create the pilot, and then allowing them latitude to run with it, to implement that, provide the support, and be able to celebrate the successes. So that's just one small thing on a status quo, but it actually was a large thing because I believe that it packs and benefits our students and our staff.
How was it received initially, I guess, from from the students and or anybody in the building?
Well, there were little hiccups initially. It was received, once it actually started running, received well. I believe it's been a success. We have surveys we're going to create for students and for staff to see where it is at this point, kind of getting to the midpoint in the year. Where it was a little bumpy was the realization is that a block was going to come out of the schedule, be replaced, and the fear for some of our students who are taking advanced placement classes and those that might be one class that's offered, like advanced placement chemistry or physics, that might limit their options within the schedule, but we did a lot of research. We did presentations with the students, and once they were able to see that the schedule worked with that part. But there was a little anxiety by some of our students, because they felt like, well, I can't do this and then do choir, or I can't, but I believe they should be able to do as much as they can. So it was important to us to do a research upfront, like this will work and and match and meet the requirements for them to be not only fully scheduled, but have the classes that they want. So I think once they've actually ran and we got through it, they they've they've seen the benefits of it and getting the anecdotal feedback from from staff is important. And I asked students too, how's it going, how do you enjoy it? And it's been nice, and it's a nice SCL relief as well for the grind of a school day.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
How do the families feel about it?
So I've gotten that some of the anecdotal reviews is that they feel that it's been positive. I heard from a few parents that their children can make up work if they've been out for an extended period of time. That's been positive, they're able to, you know, one of the blocks we we create, it's called an activity block out of the three days. One of them is an activity where you can do a club, you can do just simple fun things, and they like that chance for students to be able to relieve and release. So that part of it, the feedback I received has been positive. But I'm looking forward to launching the surveys just to get more information back to see. Because ideally, you know, it's great that I feel it's going well, but I need to listen more to get that feedback, because maybe there are areas of it that we can tweak. And a few students have provided some insight that allow where maybe that magic block is in another spot might be more advantageous for them.
Okay, thank you.
Can I pause for a second?
Yes.
I just want another water.
Oh, yeah.
I'm thirsty.
Oh, it's coming.
Sorry.
Stage right.
Adam said there are three waters up here, but I only had one.
Adam.
There you go.
That's fine, Mary, thank you.
All right.
All right.
Robin is.
I got an extra bottle, that's.
Oh, sure, please.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
All right.
I think we're, I think we're ready to go.
We're number eight.
Sorry for interrupting.
No, it's fine. So how would you hold educators at all levels accountable for delivering effective instruction?
So I think it's important that we're very clear in terms of utilizing the evaluation process, which is standard across all schools, right, across our state. And being able to work with our principals in terms of what are the key areas of focus within that piece? Being able to ensure that our principals and and those doing evaluations are staying on track in terms of the requirements for how many walkthroughs and formal observations, ensuring that's happening. But also taking that focus piece within, if the emphasis within teaching and learning or curriculum instruction, you know, we could look for areas of emphasis on that as well. And what I would like to do as superintendent is certainly be able to work with building principals. I like to get into buildings, I like to be visible, and certainly do walkthroughs in my end, non evaluative, non evaluative at all on my end, but more of a calibration so we can match, set our goals in terms of what particular standard we want to look for, whether it's a safe learning environment or different levels of engagement. Being able to set that pace, so as we work together, we can certainly give feedback to one another after we've done a series of walkthroughs in each building. And I find that as principal being very helpful. And I want to continue that as superintendent, because I believe that allows me to work with my leadership team, because they're the ones on the ground doing the evaluations and working through and being able to be consistent with that as well. I think that's really important. And certainly, if if an educator is struggling, you know, obviously, it's our duty to ensure that we're working together, the whole process is teamwork, right? And certainly, if there's a struggle somewhere, then, because the whole evaluation system is set up to be a partnership, right? So you're working with your evaluator. And if they sense that is going wrong in a particular area, then they provide feedback, opportunities to improve, and continue to work with that.
So as far as the walkthroughs, so you'd go with leadership team. How would you then share that information out to educators so that they would know, like, this is where we are, this is what's been effective?
Well, I think a a couple of things. So again, with no surprises, right? And and I know positionality is important. So when the superintendent walks in, you know, everybody sees us up, and I understand that part. So that's why it's a it's a process, and that's why it's important to be non evaluative in my part. And it's important that when I work with the leadership team, as we're calibrating, whatever particular strand is our focus area, that we're able to provide feedback as a team. So as they're going through their particular walkthroughs and they're doing the evaluation, you know, we're we're all speaking the same, right? We're all looking for same items, we're all like, understanding that process of providing feedback, right? And I do, so taking a shift as the building principal, I do ask if the teachers would like feedback from that, and I don't put it in a note write up or anything. And a lot of the teachers will take me up, and if I see something that's excellent, I'll go right back and and provide specific feedback on that. Or I could talk with my team and say, these are some areas that we really need to be working toward and and working with our instructors to see where we can make some improvement. So I think that is an important piece too. And certainly could be part of a superintendent's goal as well.
Okay, thank you.
Because obviously, I would be sharing my goal out with.
Yes.
With this committee.
Thank you.
I'm next, and.
about setting budget priorities, building a budget, and communicating those priorities during what can be perilous budget times.
You used the right word.
I did.
Can I take a drink of water first on that one? So to start with, I think it works back in terms of working together as a group. What are our priorities? What are we looking for? We're looking to create an exemplary educational experience for all students and being able to go back to, are we looking at a zero-based or a level four? Where are we looking? And being able to be very clear with that so I can provide clarity to my leadership team as they look through their buildings for priorities, right? But everything should be aligned to your strategic plan in terms of what you're looking to do because that is how you leverage the things that you need that are important to your school that then aligns with the importance and what we're working for as a district, right? So as an example, SEL, right? If that creating a safe learning environment, what are the things that are happening? What are the things that we can do to enhance that experience for our students? And that is very helpful with that piece, being able to align to that, whether it's curriculum instruction, whether it's the reading programs, writing programs, math, what have you, being able to connect and align with that. So what are our priorities? And what are we looking for? And working with our staff, what do they need for support? And I also think it's important when you're looking at your budget, in particular with your school-based budget, it's important to be reflective because things shift, times shift. So if personnel is shifting, you know, being able to reallocate funding to other areas is very important. Now, we have to be fiscally responsible, right? Our resources are precious that we have. So we need to ensure for public trust that we're maximizing our funds to take care of the needs of our students and for our staff. So once we've gone through that exercise of maximizing that piece, then we keep working towards our priorities and our asks. So it's a collaborative process where it works through the building level, where the expectations, the building leaders are working with their staff and certainly with their SAC, right? Because the SAC for each building is public, right? Where you have parents and you have community members to work through that piece. So when they bring the priorities back as a team, we can sit down and look at where they are and see and ask that the match is there with our strategic plan so that we can be very specific and very clear. If we're looking at budget lines, what budget lines have we utilized to the fullest, what budget lines maybe we can make adjustments to as things change, right? So for example, if you have a big budget line on instructional supplies that might be more paper-based and you have a budget line that's digital media, as we are shifting more towards technology in our schools, maybe we're making adjustments and shifts there as well. And again, if the technology ties into the strategic plan, perfect, beautiful, that's where we're at. In terms of personnel, we talked a lot about the mental health, right, and importance of helping our students. So again, looking at, are we staffed properly at our schools? Do we need more help there? Can we reallocate if there's some changes and shifts within our enrollment? Because enrollment has to be looked at as well because you have to project that out and certainly look with the clear eye, not just for this year coming up, but with some projections the next few years out, right? NSDAQ provides a projection of enrollment over a course of years and need to leverage that because not only are you projecting for this year when you build your budget, but having an eye for what are the patterns coming up in the future. And then once that is all brought back in, it's my job to work with my team in order to create the priorities so we can bring a clear presentation of the budget ultimately to the school committee, right? So that's clear on what we're asking for. So it's connected to the strategic plan, it aligns with our school improvement plans as well. So these are not just one-offs. We've done our due diligence in terms of maximize maximizing our resources and we look at items that might be able to be moved around R so that way when we come back to the school committee, we have a greater understanding. Now, this is a whole process that's back and forth, right? It's a process over time. You're probably starting the planning in October, late October, early November in terms of setting the calendar. So my team, they understand like what are the expectations, you know? Sorry, sorry, getting fired up here. What my team understands, you know, when they need to do the work because remember, school started. Once we get into October, now you're looking at things in the school year move. So you're asking, you need to provide enough time for your staff to really examine, you know, what are the budgetary needs? And as that process works through, you know, understanding what is that timeframe so we have enough time to work through the priorities as we sit down as the leadership team and be able to share out, right? If we have a target number that we need to meet within and we have to set priorities, it's important to put all that up so we're all working together because the needs at the high school may be very different at the middle than at the elementary, but realize maybe there's more immediacy at the elementary, so therefore the priorities need to go there at this particular time and maybe some items need to shift. So that teamwork and collaboration is important because again, resources are limited, so we need to do the best that we can to maximize the resources to give our students and staff the best opportunity for success. And obviously that process comes back to, I'm sure we would have, you know, a hearing or a committee meeting with my team as they present so you get a better understanding of what the asks are at the elementary schools, at the middle school, at the high school. So you hear that information, right? And as we work back, and I'm sure over that time, once we get it down to a point where it's agreeable, we've worked with the town manager, obviously knowing where the resources are coming in and where the drivers are, right? In terms of salaries, understanding where that is, the lines and lane changes and outside resources that are coming in, you know, chapter 70, where that's going, circuit breaker and understanding all that piece and other revenue sources maybe we can tap into, obviously transportation and certainly special education out of district placements, where is that going? Because that is certainly something that can be, that should not be a surprise as we work through, but have to make sure that we have enough of a cushion to accommodate that if we see that coming.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Gabe, you are up, sir.
Answer the final question. How would you manage staffing in the face of changing demographic needs, specifically enrollment decline at the high school, an increasing enrollment, and new classroom space at the elementary level?
So we talked about it a little bit earlier with the budget piece, right? So understanding, and this is where it can come to a crossroads, right? Is you might see some declining enrollment, realizing we're coming out of a pandemic, realizing that the social emotional needs of our students are at an all-time high, realizing that there has been learning loss, you know? In terms of that piece, maybe there needs to be some shifts where maybe you're not running as many sections as you were running at the high school, but how can you leverage those sections to positions that might provide mental health support, maybe special education support, maybe items there that weren't funded initially? How can you take that and leverage that piece there, too? And also to the point where looking at, again, this gets into that whole piece of working with the elementary, the high school, and the middle school together, realizing that if, you know, moving one piece to another, if that's necessary, those are discussions and those are tough discussions that may occur. That's a very reality there, too. And understanding that if you're running into declining enrollment pieces, that is a reallocation, but understanding that there are retirements that occur, right? There are people that may leave the district and maybe those positions, those are called softer phase outs, if you know what I mean. So you're not actually, you know, taking somebody's position, but those positions could be freed up based on those things and knowing that maybe you could move those items to meet more of an emphasis in the high school or as you look through what's happening at the elementary with some of the enrollment increases there. And again, varying those positions and making sure that there's plenty of staffing that's required at the elementary.
Thank you.
Any follow-ups?
Just a quick follow. So I know Essex Tech, I heard a little bit, they was talking a little bit in the, in the community discussion around Essex Tech. Have you had attrition problems with at Marblehead for Essex Tech and what would be done to kind of mitigate those?
Not necessarily Essex Tech, but we've had some decline in enrollment as well. Certainly there are privates that come into play. There's always a number that will go to Essex Tech. And certainly areas that we're looking at as a high school to leverage is to ensure that we're creating opportunities to create transitional programming with their middle school, right? Providing opportunities where the middle school community can come into the high school for open house, come up for a curriculum night. We have an elective day that allows the eighth graders and eighth graders from our feeder schools to come in for the morning to go through our various electives, to see the great things that are happening, right? And that usually creates a lot of excitement around course selection time. I think also, too, it kind of goes into, as we said, about promoting the positivity we talked about outside of your district, right? And being able to show all the great things that are happening, right? Because there are many great things that are happening. And how can you leverage social media for that? How can you leverage the good work of your students and staff? And how can you promote that, not just at the eighth grade level, but even at the younger levels, right? Because people are making decisions. They have many more options today. And certainly coming out of COVID, that is the case. So I think it's important that we are able to show, these are the great things that are happening. You asked the question about metrics and stuff, and that's important, too. But also the success of all of our students, right? And being able to show all the great things that we're doing to meet the needs of our students. I think that is important. And always working with an eye for areas we can improve on that and ensuring that the high school and middle school are working together, as well as the transitional between the elementaries and the middle. And how can we leverage our students at the high school in leadership positions? Again, we talked about student voice, and I know that's happening, and Adam's working on that and bringing them into the middle school and to the elementary because that's really impressionable, right? That has a good piece of building positive culture within the elementaries and middle to the high school. They feel good about that. How can you involve more of the students at those levels with the high school? I think that's an important piece, too.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, one thing, too. I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. But also, you know, at the high school, I know there are many innovative programs and I learned a lot of things today, right? We're not a tech school. We don't have those particular programs, but there are pathways that are available, innovative pathways. There's an early college program, which is very appealing. So there are many opportunities that are at the high school because you also have a very rich fine arts program, a very rich fine arts program. You have a very strong DECA program with huge, over 130 that are involved, maybe more than that. And just talking with Isaiah, who was in the audience earlier, you know, he's involved with seven clubs, right? He's involved and there's, so that student voice is growing and that connectivity with your school builds. And it's that message that works with the freshmen to the seniors, the seniors to the freshmen, but back to the transitional, that's extremely powerful, right? And that certainly may not offset everything, right? But I think it provides great opportunity not only increase and build culture, but it builds that part when people are in the process of making decisions and knowing that we've had great experiences with the high school, it's connected, that's where we want to be, that's where you want to be.
Great, thank you.
Any other follow-up questions from the group? All right, so it's time for your closing statement. And so we're interested to hear anything you'd like to tell us.
Okay. Well, again, I just want to thank not only the teachers, the administrative team, the students for putting up with me today, but all those involved. It was a very welcoming visit. It was a great experience today and it was a lot of fun. So I just want to thank everybody that made that possible. Thank you, school committee, for allowing me to be here tonight to talk about educational leadership and all the positivities that I could bring as your superintendent of Danvers Public Schools. You know, I just want to go back into my closing that I've been very selective in this process. You know, I know all the great expectations of Danvers. People ask me, why Danvers? And I say, well, quite frankly, it's a community that values education, they value what's happening with their children, it's a community that has high expectations, and that's where I want to be, a community with high expectations. The other part, too, that I think is very important is that if you look at my background, you know, I'm very loyal and I'm hardworking and I'm one that I haven't moved around many positions, right? I've been in three schools in 22 years of public education, right? So I'm not looking for a stepping stone. I'm looking to be involved in a community, provide a level of leadership at superintendent level, but also be able to take, I think, my people skills and steady leadership that can guide through tough times, celebrate success, but also using my sound judgment that I've developed, not only through my 17 years of educational experience, but through my entire leadership background. Because I think that's important as the role of a superintendent to provide that piece, to provide that so your great team that you have, that's doing great things, can do even more work, right? And the other thing, too, that I think is important, that goes for building positive culture, and I believe the superintendent sets the tone for that. I know I can do that, building a team. But I think the other part that's important, too, is my educational experience has been on the North Shore where I have a lot of contacts. And again, this job is a big job and being able to tap into those contacts and networking is critical, whether it be at the superintendent level, whether it be in the corporate level, elected official level. It's all important that, and I understand the North Shore, I've been here, so I know the dynamics of it. And being able to have a superintendent that has that understanding, I think, is important, right? Because again, it's a situation where you're looking to build culture, you're looking to keep things moving, and I believe I can do that for you and I'd be honored to be your superintendent. So again, I appreciate your time and thank you very much.
Thank you. We're glad to have you, Dan, and we appreciate everything you had to say. So at this point, what we're going to do is take a recess and give D cap a chance to get ready to go live.
Yes.
And then we'll come back in 10 or 15 minutes or so. We certainly want to have a word to thank you for being here before you go, and then we'll talk about the process.
Yes.
All right, so we're going to be in recess for 15 minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Cue for D cap. So now we are, we're live to the town while we talk about the voting process and our consultant, Dorothy Presser, has joined us on stage and she provided some guidelines, I think, from the MASNC in terms of a recommended process for going through the voting. And so I guess just by way of comment from what I see, number one, there's obviously a lot of very helpful language for specific motions and things that we need, but it seems to me two, two decisions really jumped out that ought to be, you know, we discuss publicly and let people know, here's how we're going to do it. The first is pretty simple and straightforward, how many votes does it take for someone to get, basically to get the position or at least be offered the position? And we've always done things by a majority of the members present, and that would be my inclination. I assume that we're all going to be present. And so it would take three votes for any candidate to be appointed or be chosen. The other point that I thought was important to talk about and involves more of a choice for us, which is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dorothy, there's two potential ways to go about the process. One is the ballot method, the other is the motion method. We would start in either method by discussing the candidates before a motion or a vote. With the ballot method, we all simply get to say who we would support. With the motion method, someone would make a motion to appoint X or to offer the position to X, and the language I know isn't what you provided. And then we would motion a second and a vote. So that understanding is correct in terms of, okay. Is there anything else before we have our discussion that you want to add to what we should be thinking about?
I guess, you know, one other thing is I know some of you have been busy doing reference checks. So it's at that, at the beginning, usually what happens with the reference checks is at the beginning of the discussion, before you really get into the discussion, the people that did reference checks would take some time to share their information that they gained in doing the reference checks, which isn't, you know, a verbatim, you know, I talked to this person and they said this.
Sure.
But just sort of an overview of, these are the people I spoke to, these are the things that came through, maybe there's a quote along the way that you want to share or something along those lines. But generally, that's where the discussion would start and then you would move into, generally what I see is sometimes it's, generally what I see is that someone will start off and say, I believe that this person is the stronger, strongest candidate, or I think that, you know, I'm thinking about these two people and these are, you know, what I'm thinking about each of them. And then each person gets a chance to speak. At the end of that conversation, you might be clear to everybody who's going to be the person, and then you could move to your ballot or your motion. Or you might go around a second time after people have been able to hear what their colleagues thought, and maybe that helps them coalesce some of their own thinking.
Okay. So I'm interested from my colleagues in... So I'm interested from my colleagues in sort of how you feel about the ballot method versus the motion method, in general sense.
I mean, we used to, we usually make a motion.
I'm sorry?
We usually make a motion.
We do.
So I, I guess, I feel as though if that's what we normally do when we vote, why would we change that for this? But I also know we haven't voted for a superintendent in several, several years. So I don't know. I mean, I don't know. Is it kind of like a 50/50, what each kind of school committee does as far as that goes?
Yeah. I don't think there's any prevalent practice. I mean, it is kind of a different thing than your typical.
Regular vote.
Right. Are we going to pass this policy?
Right.
Yeah.
Good.
Other members, what do you think?
I would, I'm, I'm fine with the, the motion vote. I would just recommend that we do unanimous vote, if, if possible. I'd like to, or at least get, get some feedback on that and see if, if my colleagues agree with that versus a three and then done.
So I, can I, so very often, if about, if a motion does not get immediate unanimous support, someone will make a motion to revote, to make it a unanimous vote. You know, so, and sort of the rationale behind that is letting whoever you're going to offer the job to know you didn't get support right away, but we're all going to support you when you come in. I mean, that's sort of the logic behind it.
What's the other district? Do they do the unanimous vote or is it?
I, that's, you know, again, to Robin's question, what happens, that's pretty common to follow, if it wasn't a unanimous vote the first time around, to sort of follow up and make it unanimous.
But, but other districts don't do like a, a majority? They go to.
Oh, no. They would, oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah. Three vote, five votes versus three votes.
Yeah. So I guess if, I guess what I'm saying is if it doesn't turn out to be unanimous the first time, there's often a revote. So the people, if it, the two, assuming it's three to two, right? The two who were in the minority, then say, you know, I'll join the majority and make it a unanimous vote. So it's sort of a two step. Does that, am I making sense?
Maybe I'm not being clear. I, I guess.
Well, you're, you're hoping that everybody reaches the same decision.
I am. But, but the current, the way that Eric presented this before is he said that three people, if one candidate gets three votes, that would be our choice. But what I'm, what I was proposing is if we did a.
Five.
We would need to have five votes to, to make a candidate versus three.
Let me comment, if I could, on that. So here's my thought, and then Gabe and you others may have different viewpoints, but this has been a, I think, a really good process to get three good candidates.
Strong. I'd say very strong.
Yeah.
Not even just good.
But strong. There you go. And who are, you know, one of the reasons we moved the process a little quickly was because we think that the, these candidates may be attractive to other districts, too. My concern, and I, I don't, I don't know that it would happen here, but imagine if, you know, four people were for a particular person and the fifth vote dug their heels in. And we have taken the position that it's got to be five to zero. Or it stuck three to two. We could literally get into a position where we end up making no choice. And unless someone changed, just two people changed their vote, for example. And what then? Do we go back through the entire process, having lost the fall as an opportunity? That would be my concern, that you end up with no choice in a really competitive environment. Now, I recognize that's the worst case scenario, but that's my thought on the subject and that's why I wouldn't, I wouldn't support making the, the vote unanimous. I certainly think as a matter of, of process, once, if it's a three to two vote, hopefully the two, as Dorothy said, would then say, well, you know, I support, you know, the position and we'll work with this, you know, so and so, you know. I, I think there are ways to, to handle that piece tactfully. But anyway, that's my thought. Gabe and Alice, I don't know how you, you guys feel about that?
I'll just well say, as far as the interview process, like when we had the screening committee, it was by majority who we were initially going to bring in. And then as far as the finalists went forward, we again went by the majority. So there was 12, so it was like.
It was three fourths majority.
Three fourths. Yes. Because, yes. Yeah. So it wasn't, it didn't have to be unanimous.
Gotcha.
Just for some background.
Yeah. I think, I think for me personally, it's us providing a conversation and a dialogue about each of the candidates that is only fair to them and fair to the community for them to kind of hear and understand our feedback and kind of what's going on in the decision of who we think is the best candidate. So as long as there is an opportunity for us to do that, I'm okay with it being majority versus unanimous.
Okay. Gabe?
Yeah. I mean, I think this is a very important decision. At the core of it, I think a majority vote. I'll take a step back for a second. Having the discussion should cue each of us into what our thoughts are and where the vote will go. What, what I fear with a majority vote, which is only a three person vote, is that a first motion, first person gets a majority, it's over type of scenario is very concerning, given like the, the gravity of this decision. What I like about moving towards a majority is that even though we do have that discussion and we don't have a majority, gives us an opportunity to potentially give everyone a vote or to Dorothy's point, to ask for a revote and the minority join the majority. You know, I would just, I don't know how comfortable I would be if the first person we put a motion on gets a three person vote and it's over.
It's entirely possible. And I know what you mean. The, the issue is, is that do other candidates get enough consideration? Hopefully, if we have a vibrant discussion, which seems to be the plan, before we even talk about a motion to appoint someone, then every candidate will have had their, had their moment, so to speak. Where we'll talk about their strengths and what we see. And so we'll have an open and vibrant discussion about that. Everybody can be honest about how they feel. So everyone will, will be aired, so to speak, before we even take a motion. So I think that could obviate your consent.
I could live with that.
Okay. All right.
Can I just make one more little point?
Sure, please.
Is that, and I'm sure you all understand this anyway, but it's part of my little soapbox spiel, so.
Good. I'm going to ask you to pull the microphone just a little close.
So you, and I'm sure you all understand this, but you're going to be talking about people publicly and you're sort of holding your careers, their careers and their reputation in your hands. So we always advise that when you're talking about the different people, you're talking about the match of the person to the position, not people against each other.
Right.
Candidates against each other.
In terms of organizing the discussion, because I think we're all pretty aligned on the, the need for us to have this discussion, if we could do it in a way where we either do it alphabetically, but, you know, making sure that we are giving each of the candidates their, their time for a proper discussion, I think, is.
True.
I think alphabetically makes sense. So that's what we've done a lot, right? To the whole process.
Yeah. Alphabetically, like you mean the each candidate?
Like last name. So we, so for us, like it would be Bauer would be first, then Bruno, then Cushing. So it's, you do not like.
Yeah.
As we just discuss a lot.
Just for points of discussion.
Yeah. When we're sharing like reference stuff and just thoughts.
I'm trying to standardize it so that we're giving them equal time and discussion points, I guess.
Would it be possible for, if someone feels that, not necessarily in alphabetical order, or we could do that, but let's say hypothetically, and I'm just going to speak hypothetically, Alice is in favor of Dan Bauer. And so we ask, you know, does anyone feel, you know, a specific candidate is one of their top choices and why? And kind of start that way, where we each go down and talk about.
So it goes by, it goes by school committee, man?
Yeah. Because I feel like if we, if we just highlight someone, I'm not saying that there's any negative comments that are going to be made, but I think forcing a committee member to speak of someone or on behalf of someone who did not, kind of considering in a top role, may kind of cloud the conversation. What I'd love to hear is a conversation around, you know, I feel a particular way about candidate A and their qualifications, but B is right there as well. And so this is kind of where I'm sitting as opposed to taking my time to speak about candidate B, who may possibly be my third choice. And I don't think I'd be able to give him the attention they would deserve. I don't want to feel obligated to make a comment about every candidate. I want to focus on one, maybe two.
Well, I think it's only fair for us to know, though, that you feel that way about the candidate. So I think if we give you that platform to even share that, I think is what we're looking for in that discussion.
Right.
Like, how will I know that if I don't, if you don't abstain from providing feedback?
Well, I think the dialogue should be, you know, for example, Dr. Doherty, you know, what are your thoughts on the candidates? You know, which do you feel? And we go in that order. As opposed to candidates, we just go down the line and talk about who and why we feel would fit the role. You know? And that will force us, and that will clue me in, all right, Robin's candidate A and C, your candidate B and A. And I think that's the easiest way. And help me if I'm going in the right direction on this, but I think that's an easier way to do it than all of us talk about one candidate. And then by the time we're all done, I'm not necessarily sure if I'm going to know who or where we stand on a particular candidate.
But I also don't want that to sway someone. Do you know what I mean? Like, I don't know. I like the alphabetical idea.
I think the open dialogue in the format that I mentioned, I mean, that's the intention. It's not necessarily to sway, but it's for me to hear why you prefer someone. So it's not so much a swaying, it's what's your thought process and why someone's qualified and would fit within this district?
Okay.
And I think that's kind of, I want to give you my thought process on why I think a particular candidate is qualified and suitable for the district. And I think based on that, when we go to vote, there's, there's no question what your position is, what yours is, et cetera.
Is that what you?
That's typically what I see.
Okay.
All right. Talk it out to see.
Yeah, I know. Because I, I, I mean, again, it's not about swaying, it's about do we have a consensus? Like, are we all there and are we, are we thinking about it in the right way? And I may be close. I may say, I could live with A or B.
Yeah. And I think it's definitely important, too. You know, if people are calling us or emailing us, you know, to keep that in mind and obviously the Google form that we can look at. So that's why I think as much information that we can receive from the community members, from those who have met any or all of the candidates to really give us that, because there's only five of us voting, but we are representing the Danvers community and the, you know, what the Danvers community wants. So I'm just begging the community to give us feedback. And I promise you, it's anonymous. I don't know who the people are. I don't want to know.
All right. I think that makes sense. I don't think we, I'm hearing the consensus is do this by motion versus by ballot. All right. Then that's the way we'll do it. And I think the discussion, we'll see if we can let it develop organically. We'll make sure that, you know, do our best to make sure everybody gets, all the candidates, we talk about the potential fit and the strengths and what we see, and they deserve that respect, having gone through this process, which is, I'm sure, it's arduous to go through all of this and we need to respect that. And I'm also hearing that the consensus is that we'll aim for a majority vote versus the unanimous vote. And we'll play it from there. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
All right. Anything that you want to add, Dorothy, to what we're doing here? Okay.
No, it sounds like you've been thoughtful about it.
Anything, anyone on the committee wants to add before Monday?
What, just what's the procedure going to be? We, we're going to finish our, the, the last game.
Yep.
And then we'll take a break, I'm assuming, and then we'll come back and then we'll start our discussion.
Yeah. Because we need to time like to look at the, like I want to be able to look at, you guys have time to look at the feedback. Because I know a lot of us are coming right from work. So I want us to see, you know.
And will the candidates be here?
No.
No. Dorothy will call.
Okay.
Yeah. So once you, once you make your unanimous vote, I will call the candidate and ask them if they are going to accept the position and come back to you and let you know. And I also get to call the other two, so.
That's why we paid you to call the other two.
Now, the one more, one more thing we haven't talked about is that once we have a candidate, it's not quite a love match until we get the contract done. And I know in the past, we've appointed a subcommittee of the school committee to negotiate the contract with the, with the new potential superintendent. I would like to see us do that again. My intention would be to appoint a subcommittee of us. And I will announce that, you know, once we have the, once we have the vote. I know everybody probably wants to be on.
How many are you looking for?
Two.
Two?
Okay. We can't do three, so we can only do two. And I wouldn't do one. I think it's best to have more voices than one. And so we'll go from there. But we'll announce that Monday night as well.
Okay.
Great. Okay. All right. Dorothy, thank you again for all of your help during this process. It has been invaluable. We'll recommend you to all our friends. All right. Anything else from the committee? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some motion to adjourn?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you and good night, Danvers. Complete the interview. We'll take a recess. We will come back and discuss and then vote for the candidate we feel is the right choice for Danvers. We have one item of business to take care of right after that and then we'll adjourn the meeting. So that's it. We are pleased to have Jeff Bruno with us today. Jeff is the current superintendent of schools in Scarborough, Maine. And I'm going to let Robin or Alice or both introduce Jeff to the community.
She's going to make me, so. Okay. So this is Jeff Bruno. He's currently the superintendent in Scarborough, Maine. Prior to that, he was the superintendent of schools in Falmouth, Maine. And he is also currently studying for his doctoral degree. So welcome.
Thank you very much.
How this is going to run is you'll have time for an opening statement. There's a total of 10 questions. We each have two. And then you'll have time for a closing statement. And anytime we might ask for like a follow up question to something that you answered.
Very good.
That's how it's going to work. Yeah. So with that.
Thank you, Robin.
I'm not missing anything, right?
Go right to.
Thank you very much.
Well, just a little bit about my history. So I've spent most of my educational career actually in Massachusetts. First as a teacher, middle school, science teacher and head of school at Community Day Charter Public School in Lawrence, Massachusetts. I then actually went on, we briefly moved to the Worcester area and I was assistant principal in Hopkinton, Massachusetts. And then back to the, to the North Shore and worked in Georgetown and then was hired as middle school principal in Belmonte Middle School in Saugus, where I worked and then where I worked and then was elevated to the first district-wide director of curriculum and instruction for Saugus prior to starting to look, looking for superintendencies. My wife and I had actually gotten married up in Maine, and a couple district opportunities opened up there. Didn't know anybody there, and all of a sudden, the phone calls started, phone calls came in. I went up and interviewed, and next thing, it's, hey, kids, we're moving to Maine. And so we, we moved up to Falmouth, and I was there as superintendent, served as superintendent there for seven years, which was just an amazing experience with, I've got four daughters, all four kids in the schools, and then took the position where I'm currently in, in Scarborough. Meanwhile, my wife still was working remotely in Newton, and while remote up in Maine, but has subsequently gotten to a point where she's got to be, start to be in the office a little bit, and we started to reconsider a move back to Massachusetts, which, which is, we moved to Andover, Mass, this past August. And now I'm doing the drive up to Scarborough. But anyway, that's a little bit about my history. I feel like what I've experienced so far today as well, I just wanted to thank everyone who welcomed me to the, to the schools as part of the tours. I was able to visit the high school, middle school, as well as the Smith School and Riverside. The teachers and kids were just amazing. You know, I just, the more that I've had the opportunity now to meet with the administrative staff and the team, as well as teachers and teacher leaders in the district, and it just feels like a great fit for my leadership style. I'm excited to come back to Mass as an educator and an educational leader. And, and this has just been, been a great day. And everything that I've learned is part of the original interview process and, and, and meeting school committee members as well as the community today. Today was about 18,700 steps. So I got my steps in, which was great. Thank you very much for that, too. I got some credit there. And so that's, that's, that's a little bit about me.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to questions. And our first question comes from Alice Kim.
Thank you so much for that. I think my, the first question that I have leads very much into what you're talking about. So after today's walkthrough, how would you describe our school district? And what opportunities and challenges do you think we face?
Well, first of all, just the atmosphere in all the schools was warm, really welcoming. I saw some really innovative teaching. I saw some amazing and very inclusive special education classrooms and teaming of teachers and staff. And the, the new elementary building, the Smith Building, is beautiful for sure. But it's just the, the people, really. The teaching that I saw and the teachers I was able to connect with and meet were just clearly very professional and, and great at what they do. The kids were, you could just tell, like, it's just had that, that warm community feel. The, the kids were very open and welcoming and super nice. I'm the president, you know, in a full suit, so that was nice. They got called the president. They locked into the, the movie, you know, with Bruno, so that's always a hit. You always get that. And there was actually, there's, there's a big painted portrait in the atrium at the, at the middle school. Someone asked, someone asked if I was the person on, you know, that was, and I'm like, wow, okay, all right, that's, that's a new one. I hadn't gotten that one yet, so. So, no, I mean, the, I was just really overall impressed just with the staff and the students and the community feel in all the schools. I think, I think there's a lot of opportunities and challenges that are certainly specific to Danvers, but then also resonate in, in other towns that I've worked in, kind of post-pandemic. Really, you know, we've had such a massive interruption that impacts social-emotional learning, that impacts routines for kids and for staff and adults, that we're all trying to get back to. It gets a little better, I think, with each year. I mean, this, this, I would say, this, this summer into the fall felt like the first time I was preparing for the opening of school as an educator and not as a public health official, which felt wonderful, frankly. There are still so many challenges that we will continue to struggle with, with all of our kids. But the opportunities for leadership, and I think some of the innovative practices that teachers and leaders that we've had to, to, that the, that the pandemic has brought upon us just in reacting, how do we teach kids remotely when they're not even in front of us? How do we handle a hybrid schedule? It was like taking an organization and flipping it upside down a couple of times. And, and I just think that all of us, like, teachers and educators and parents and kids have learned a lot from that and, and hopefully will, will build the resilience to kind of take stock of where we are and then where, where we want to go as a community heading, heading forward, kind of using some of those new skills, you know, that we, we learned reacting to the disruption that was the last couple of years.
Great, thank you.
All right, our next question will come from Josh.
All right, Jeff, what metrics would you use to determine the success of a school district? What would you change or improve to make Danvers a top-tier district in Massachusetts?
So there's, there are multiple metrics, I think, that, that you can use to assess how a district is doing. For, I mean, first and foremost, I mean, I think looking at grade level summit of standardized test scores is one lens. So obviously MCAS from third all the way through, using, using that as a benchmark to evaluate curriculum, to evaluate teaching and learning, and to make strategic decisions on where the school needs to go to make sure that our students are successfully meeting grade-level standards. There are a lot of different other kinds, means of assessment for, that are related to aligning social-emotional learning. We've used a Panorama survey, which is linked to the Castle Framework for Social Emotional Learning in Scarborough, which has been a way to kind of measure where kids are on, along the social-emotional learning lens. I think success of a school district also, you know, as a superintendent, being in schools and being present and being visible, and then also asking a lot of questions. We've done a yearly community dialogue as well as part of how we develop our strategic plan. But the, the metrics as far as student achievement, that's where you start. And then the formative assessments that are in place to really be able to get at multi-tiered system of supports for students. In Maine, it's called RTI. It's a similar idea. The, the formative assessments that you're using to make sure that kids are getting the individualized support that they need as well. All, all of those things collectively, I think, are critical. And then you have to have some form of, of measurement for how staff are doing, inclusive of, you know, staff morale and, and surveys that, that are also focused on where we are and where we want to go as a, as a school community.
Great, quick, just quick follow-up. Can you give us an example of something that, where you've seen some sort of adjustment that you've had to make due to one of those metrics in, in your current role?
So in, in, well, in Scarborough right now, we're, we're looking very closely at our writing curriculum. And that's just based on, on results in, in Maine. It's the MEAs. The, the challenge with the MEAs is that they've used different assessments each year. So it's very difficult to get kind of longitudinal data on that. But being able to identify kind of where the gaps may be and, and focus on, on aligning curriculum better based on, on how you're doing as a, as a district. So we identified that as a weakness and have taken steps to address writing in the curriculum across content areas. And then it's, in a, in a similar vein, in Falmouth, there was a, a lot of adoption of, of new, a new math curriculum at the middle school for a lot of the same reasons. You know, just really being able to dig into some of those results and looking at achievement results across time to identify, you know, areas that you need to, to improve and strengthen. Been super impressed with the curriculum team here in Danvers, both at the high school and middle school and elementary school levels. It is, and I remember this from, from Saugus, where you've got five elementary schools or four elementary schools all across with their own cultures and, and histories, and, and bringing them together to make sure that the curriculum is aligned across five different buildings is, is a, a challenge, for sure. But super important, right? So that you're, you're well-aligned and, and the educational experiences are consistent, regardless of which building you're in.
Good, thanks, Jeff.
Robin, you are next.
Yes, mine's kind of wordy. How do you keep your committee informed? In particular, what is your strategy around issues that are your responsibility, but where the school committee may have an interest? And what has been their response and feedback?
I, I've had, I, I've established just a, a routine weekly connect and, and standing meeting with, with Board of Education, so not School Committee, but in Scarborough, and did the same in Falmouth, where, you know, every week, I've, I've got that check-in, whether we need it or not, with, with the board chair. And really, the ethic is around no surprises. So things that could impact, obviously, the board or the governance of the schools, and then vice versa, too, things that, that the chair or other board members or, or other school committee members are hearing in the community. Just having that exchange of information and communication consistently is, is really key. I don't know, I don't know if the school committee in Danvers has done this before, but doing a, a board-level retreat, too, along with superintendent and members of leadership, has been an effective mechanism, too, to do, you know, once a year, just to kind of set priorities and vision for, for the year and that kind of thing. I've found that to be super effective and, and really just open lines of communication and transparency around, you know, things that come across at my desk that are, that are critical for the community, and just being open with, with that and having just that consistent, ongoing communication and check-in.
Can you tell us a little bit about this, this yearly retreat?
Yeah.
Yeah, what do you, I mean, what is like, what do you do during it? It's like, how build that?
Well, we, we would do it right, usually it was mid-August, and it was one day. And the morning was superintendent and the board alone. And then the afternoon was leadership team, so principals, as well as central office administrators, along with the board in the afternoon. And, and it was about setting up workshop times. So there was, the, the meetings alternated between, like, like a, a business meeting and then more of a workshop model where, where you can dig into issues that impact students. And so we would set the topics, the workshop topics for the year, talk a little bit about, like, I, it was usually a week or so after we've had a, a leadership team retreat, you know, where we've discussed, okay, here, here are our goals for the year. Here are the things we want to focus on as part of our strategic plan. And just basically set, set the table for how we were going to, you know, some of the goals for that year for the school district, K-12.
Thank you.
Any follow-up? All right, I am next. Excuse me. What role do you think that the public schools have in addressing the increasing mental health issues among our young people? And what ideas do you have to address those issues?
Well, it's central. And, and, you know, I was going to make the joke ahead of time that, you know, every COVID year should count as a dog year, like, seven years. So we should be like, you know, those two years were just, felt like seven. And, and I think that, and even pre-pandemic, I think, you know, public schools have really, and educators frankly, have been asked to do more and more just in terms of, of the social-emotional health of students at, at all ages. I think as a, as a teacher, you know that kids come in and, and you have to get them into a space where they're ready to learn, you know? And, and doing that is a challenge. And in particular, I would say, in the last year or two, and if, if you've ever, you know, if you've been in the classroom and talked with teachers, you know, it's like getting, getting back into the routine of being fully in person and full classrooms, all those things. You know, the kids have struggled, you know? And you've got, you know, second graders that had never had preschool or kindergarten experience or that kind of thing, at least fully in person. Beyond that, though, the schools really, in, in terms of the health issues that, that are, you know, and, and to what degree do you, where's the line between mental health and physical health and overall wellness, right? And, and I think that more and more schools are part of that, part of that response and need to work in partnership with families and with parents, you know, to, to, to really strengthen the overall health of, of all of our kids. You know, and you hear that, I mean, you hear that phrase, a lot that takes a village, but that's real and, and that's true. So I think, you know, where, where it's really effective to address mental health issues, at least that play out in schools and at home, is the more that you can have effective partnerships with families and with parents, the healthier, I think, overall that our kids are going to be.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Sure.
Can you give us an example of some of those partnerships that you've built with parents or caregivers in your community?
So one of the things we did, and this was in 2016 in, in Falmouth, so it was a few years before, we did create an inter, intercultural awareness and inclusion committee that was representative of a lot of, that was families. It was parents. It was students and, and our active civil rights groups in our buildings, as well as staff and administrators. And I, I bring that up because it was, it was kind of very much of a grassroots thing and not a response to one specific incident on a national scale. But there were, there were just some things, as, as Falmouth was getting more diverse, we had some issues that didn't get out to the press but were, were really concerning around mental health, but then also around how do we deal with, you know, families that had moved in from different cultures and different backgrounds? And creating that, that group that could serve as, as almost an advisory group to the board and then also help inform us as educators, gave a lot of parents, I think, a stake in, in where we were going as a community and as a school community. And it was powerful and, and continues on through, through, you know, in, as, in the lead-up and then the response to the pandemic, that, that committee has, has been an important part of, you know, how we respond to some of, some of the issues around diversity, equity, inclusion, and, and, and changes and, and what we want to, want our kids to learn and also making sure that all of our students feel like they have a connection to the classroom and to their schools.
Great, thank you.
All right, next up, Gabe.
Describe a time when you faced a diversity, equity, and inclusion issue at your school. What was that issue and how did you address it?
We, this was actually right around, around the same time. It was, it was pretty soon after we had created, this committee had formed. In 2016, we had a, we had a swastika that was carved into a table outside of the theater in the high school. And a student found it. And, you know, it's one of those things, it's, you know, it's, you know, you, there's the immediate response, and then there's the, you know, because now it's, it's not like a few kids heard about it and then, and then, you know, in the age of everything else, you have pictures and then it's out and it's, and, you know, and then it's, okay, how do we handle this? And having, having that committee in place, I think, really helped in the response. So there's the immediate response. It's, it's trying to figure out who was responsible, and then also processing with kids and the community and the staff. And so there's a lot of things that, that I think we were able to do right out of the gate quickly to try and, and, and address the issue and then also process it through some of the work of the committee, where there was a lot of high school kids who are on the committee as well. And so that was, I think we were successful in kind of framing it as an educational moment, too. But it shook a lot of people for, you know, obvious reasons. And, and so there's that immediate response. There's obviously the removal of, of the symbol. And then, but then there's the, the processing of confronting that it, that it happened and that it was there and, and communicating with the kids about it. And then having the, the, some of the kids on the civil rights group, and that was a part of this committee, process it as well. You know, and then also being open and transparent and, and just saying, here's what happened. You know, so, so communicating that out immediately to the greater community was really important as well. Thank you. These days, these days, if, you know, you can't wait. I mean, your response has to be immediate and open and wide, because if you're not framing it, framing it or framing the solution or, or taking, you know, charge essentially of how you're going to respond, then other people will make those decisions for you and it's, can spiral out of control quickly.
If I can just ask a follow-up. When something like that happens or other events happen, and sort of just in general, what do you think is your role in terms of the community, sort of as the front-facing representative of the school district?
Well, first and foremost, you got to own it, and you got to take responsibility, you know? And a lot of times, this job is, is, even if it's not your fault, you know? You know, you, you take responsibility, take blame and give credit where, where it's due. And, and I think that works. It's, it's effective leadership. It's, it's taking ownership over something that you may not have control over, but ultimately, you know, it's, it's on you to, to kind of guide the response and, and, and to work with. you know, it's, it's on you to, to kind of guide the response and, and to work with your team and to make sure that, that you're taking steps to address these kind of things and, and, you know, when, when a core value of your organization has been threatened, then you gotta respond.
Okay. Alice, you are up again.
Oh, goodness, that was fast, sorry. Okay. Tell us about a time you faced conflict within your district or a school. Take us through how you dealt with it and what you learned.
Ooh, back to five. We had very, very, and again, we talk about like the, and it's hard to evaluate sometimes whether it's a really vocal minority and it's only a few, a handful of people, or if it's actually larger than that, but, actually, really funny story about that. So, so there was a group of parents who, who felt that we needed a plan to get everyone back fully in person. We were, we were, we'd been in hybrid for about half of the year, and all, and all the metrics and everything else, just it made sense to, to continue, but there was just more and more increasing pressure of getting kids back into the classroom full-time, which was not possible, given all the social distancing restrictions and everything else in play, so, but that didn't stop people from really pushing and pushing and pushing, and, and there were letters that everybody was signing and, and moving around, this was when I was in Falmouth. And so there was just, just more and more pressure, and we had a board meeting that went until about 1:00 in the morning, I thought the whole town was gonna speak at one point, I was on Zoom and, and everything, so it was, there was a lot of things, all of a sudden, that just, it was like, it just kind of exploded, and, you know, we got together as a team and, and put together what we thought was a reasonable plan to start getting kids back into school full-time and figure, it was particularly challenging, I think, at the elementary school. And then, so we had kind of a graduated plan, where we would, we would get the primary school kids back on a, on a schedule that was close to full-time by X date, and then do, do the same at the middle school and high school. So, so we'd put together a plan that, that we felt like was, was, was workable, and I just remember being at home, my, my daughter was a senior in high school, and all of her friends, I was, I was in the kitchen and I came in and they were like, Mr. Bruno, you can't, we can't go back five days. I have got a tea time every Monday morning now and on Tuesdays, and on Wednesdays, and you can't mess with my schedule. I mean, this hybrid thing, it's working, and, and all these people, they, they don't know what they're talking about, and you can't, I'm a senior now, like, you can't mess with my schedule, it was, you know, I was like, all right, you know, duly noted, if you wanna come out to the, you know, the, to the board meeting tonight, you know, Connor, than you ever know.
A much different perspective than what you were receiving.
Exactly, because, you know, these kids, it's their senior year and they have to be together, and, you know, and if you ask the kids, even a few of them, they're like, no, you know what, we're good. But anyway, that, so, so, you know, and, and again, the, the challenge of that was, I think, giving the time and space to listen and, and then also to outline a, a plan that would be workable and then, and then essentially implement it and, and get the board to, to sign off on it. And in Maine, it's very much a, a local control state, so there's no overarching state saying, this is when we're doing this, and, and you're kind of hung out to dry in some ways with some of the COVID stuff, so, so it wasn't as if the board couldn't make an alternate decision, so there was, and it's all those, you know, controlling all the public pressures as a, as a board, as a school committee, so that you're making, you know, what's, what's the best choice and best decision for your community and for your kids.
All right, thank you. Josh, you are up, sir.
Great. Jeff, think about a time, a specific time, when you had to challenge the status quo to make change. What was the situation, what steps did you take in order to make that change?
Challenge the status quo? I, you know, I, I feel like the, my, my first, I think, couple months in Scarborough, I had some, some really ultimately very productive meetings with some, some of the leadership of our teacher union. It, you know, a couple of the first meetings were, were, were very challenging, and it was clear as far as how, how the union and, and the administrative team had the status quo of how they had been communicating was not healthy. So I reached out and I was also able to, to sit down and kind of meet one-on-one with, with the union president and just work out, you know, some norms and some ground rules of, of how we should be communicating. And I think that was, that was a different tact than, than she probably expected, and, and I think one that was ultimately, or has been ultimately, pretty effective, and pushing back that, that, all right, if this, this is how we've, how you've been communicating with, with the previous superintendent or previous administration, this isn't really how I'd like to communicate, let's try this. And, and I feel like the message got through and, you know, we've been able to have a much more productive relationship, I think, between the leadership in, in town and, and the, the teacher union.
What was the nature of the type of communication? Where was it going wrong?
I think that there, there, there just wasn't any kind of open and honest communication or even like set times where the team would meet one another, so that there was just a lot of, just a lot of misunderstandings and missed opportunities, you know, to really get at where the teachers were feeling and how the teachers were feeling and, and where the administration was going. And I think it was just, just, I think, a lack of, of leadership on the, probably on the administrative side more than anything else.
Good, thank you.
If I can ask a follow-up that I think kind of fits in there, excuse me. Looking at your resume, one of the things that stands out is that you led the Scarborough and Falmouth school districts to achieve distinction, as two of the highest-performing K-12 public school districts in Maine. What, how did that happen? What kind of changes did you implement, or was it just an atmospheric change? How do you think you got there?
You know, we did, we did some, you know, it's funny, I came up to Maine and, and stole some things from Mass, I mean, we implemented some, some, in Falmouth, like, we started doing more measurable goals and SMART goal-setting as an administrative team, which I'm sure anyone who's taught in Mass schools or have been principals are, you know, fully aware of the SMART goals, and, you know, here's where we are, and, and, you know, a lot of the teachers in Falmouth, super talented, driven, professional, very, very good, and for Maine standards, very well-paid as well, and, I mean, it's, it's the district where you want to teach. And so starting with something that's already strong and making it stronger, but building, it really starts with building a strong team. I mean, you know, with, with your school leadership and district-wide leadership, and then really strategically planning together and doing that collaboratively, so, so that everybody's interdependent, and then also engaging teachers and teacher leaders. So we had a learning, the, the, we had a group together that was union leadership, but also teacher leaders and administrators that would plan all of the professional development days, and then also set meaningful goals and targets for, for, you know, where our students, how our students were performing, and, and just, just really dig into the interdependence of team. So, you know, I was kind of steeped in the works of Dufour and others, where, where, you know, you're using common assessments to, to, to get teachers to really work together collaboratively, to exchange best practice and, and great ideas in the classroom really emanate and flow from, from teacher to teacher. So the more that they're involved in their own PD and then also just taking their practice to the next level, you know, it works with kids, you know, and we got a lot of recognition along those lines with, you know, Blue Ribbon School distinctions at all three levels. And Scarborough, too, I think, there's just so many talented teachers that if you're able to find ways to have them meaningfully collaborate and use the time that they have, which is so precious, the PD time and everything else, which is, you know, probably not enough of, but, but using that time effectively so that they're growing together and using one another as, as resources as well, is powerful, and it will drive the student experience, for sure.
Thank you. Any follow-ups?
No, but this is a perfect segue, because the next question is, how would you hold educators at all levels accountable, accountable for delivering effective instruction?
Well, there, there are professional evaluation and growth system in place that, and, and you've got to, you've got to implement with fidelity and, and work and encourage and making sure that the teachers have the resources that they need to be successful and the expectations, and that they have those opportunities for professional growth and collaboration. And, and you've got to, you've got to implement the systems that you have in place. And that's, that's always a challenge, but it's, it's critical to, to meet the needs of kids. And, and there's a, you know, a well, certainly a well-established system to do that in, in Massachusetts and, and in Danvers, and, and it's, it's just, you know, implementing those systems that are there with fidelity and, and ways that will give our teachers the support they need to, to grow as professionals.
All right, thank you.
Quick follow-up?
Sure.
How would you, you referenced it before about your leadership style, but how would you describe your leadership style?
Team, very much a collaborative team-oriented. So the more, I think the more that I've been in, in leadership positions, whether it was, you know, as a principal or now as superintendent, there are times where you just have, you have to make decisions, whether it's in crisis situations or, or you have to be willing to, to, just to act and to, and to do what's right. But most of the, you know, the most important decisions, people need, need to feel that division is shared and that it's not top-down, there's a, you know, it's, it's, it's participatory, it's encouraging teams, it's getting feedback, it's asking a lot of questions, listening and making informed decisions and making sure that, that people also have ownership over the decisions. So for example, like, you know, when I, when I was a middle school principal at Belmonte, one of the first things we did in the first year was put a committee together to completely revamp the schedule, because the, the schedule that was in place was not conducive to effective learning for kids, and it also wasn't using the staff that we did have efficiently, which, which we desperately needed to do, so we completely rolled, took, took, it took over a full year, but completely turned the schedule and, and rolled out a new one over, over that time period. And those kind, those kind of like fundamental systemic changes and cultural changes require leadership that's, that's collaborative in nature and, and building capacity in others. And so I try as much as possible to make sure that those, those who I, I work with, I'm providing them what they need to, to grow in their own positions and with their own leadership. So definitely facilitator, but, but willing to make the tough decisions when they need to be made.
Great, thank you.
All right, I'm next. This question is about budgeting and how you build a budget, how you advise your staff and school committee about budget priorities during challenging and perilous times.
That's right.
And also, again, I don't know, can you tell us a little about the process in Scarborough, for example, of putting a budget together?
You know, it's very, it's very similar in terms of, of the, the schedule, and when you find out, for example, chapter 70 money in January in Maine, it's, it's called, it's a different form, but you find at about the same time what your subsidy, state subsidy is going to be. You know, I always, we've always built a budget star, and transparency, 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 I could say it more than three times, but I chose three, super important in, in how you're building a budget. So, so, and starting with your leadership team, so our leadership team would, would start focusing on, on school-level needs and even whether it's programs or positions, that kind of thing, and you're doing that together as a, as a K-12 team, so it's not individual conversations with building principals, you're really staying together as a district-wide leadership team and starting to build and share what your priorities are at the school level. And what that does is it really kind of, can, you know, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of hard questions that start, and that's usually like late December into early January, where you start having those discussions as a leadership team, you're able to then kind of project what your level services budget is going to cost you into the next year, and then start prioritizing any new requests or things that will, you know, take the district or the school to the next level, whether it's a new position or whether it's a new program that, that people want to initiate, and have those discussions first as a leadership team, and then start connecting with the board and the finance committee. And then there's also, I was talking a little bit about, about this with town manager as well, having those early conversations with the town manager and other town departments early on, so you get a, a projection of some of the priorities of the other town departments, I think is so valuable for, for the superintendent to also work hand-in-hand and collaboratively with other town officials. And, I mean, there's been so many times where, where we've gotten to help fund the town side, to fund some things that, that our school department really, really needed, and then vice versa, too, where we've been able to back off on some things that was, was a priority for a town and other departments. So it's all interrelated, and the more that you can work ahead of time with other departments in that early, kind of like late fall, well, actually, in, in Mass, the, everything's a little, pushed a little earlier than it is in Maine, which is actually nice. But a lot, the earlier you can have those conversations, the better, and then bringing in, you know, the finance committee and, and having some significant time with the leadership team with, with our kind of proposed list of needs and the, the school committee early on in that process, too. We did like a half-day workshop model prior to going to like a full budget hearing, and then in Scarborough and in Falmouth, there's town council as well, so, which is similar to the select board.
Thank you. Follow-ups?
So, oh, I have one.
Please.
So you talked us through the budget and decisions that are made, is there a time when, well, like, I guess, how would you prioritize, prioritize, like, especially right now in Massachusetts, special ed inflation right now has really gone up, so it doesn't have to be a special ed budget priority, but like, when you've had to really prioritize something?
Yeah, and, and it's been very similar in Maine, too, in particular, dealing with the amount of special education referrals and people who are, you know, being found eligible, too, so our special education costs have gone, increased significantly just in the last year or two, so, and that, that also, you know, we, there's also a lot more that's gone into beefing up, you know, tier-one and tier-two interventions and looking at response to intervention or, you know, multi-tiered system of supports as well. I think sometimes it's just we're too quick to try and identify a learning disability where, where there are other interventions that, that can be put in play in the classroom that can be effective as well, and that's, that's, that's a piece of it as well. But it's no question that's been, been a challenge for school districts and communities as part of the budget process, and then a lot of times, and I, I know this, this happened last year in Danvers, too, where, where you can have a, a late, unexpected expense that's really high, you know, that's special education-related, that you, that no one could have planned for, and anytime you have surprises like that as part of your budget process, that's, that's a challenge.
Gabe, you are up, sir.
All right, final question. How would you manage staffing in the face of changing demographic needs, specifically enrollment decline at the high school and increasing enrollment and new classroom space at the elementary level? And if you can share any examples in your most recent experience, that would be great in regards to enrollment declines in any of your districts. in regards to enrollment declines in any of your districts.
Yeah, it's, you know, when you have it within the same or a similar phase, like, if you have enrollment dips that are close in grade levels, right, then, and you can follow the bubble up through, you know, but when you have a significant decline at the high school and then an increase at the elementary school, it's super challenging. And, you know, you try as much as possible to take advantage of, you know, if you have declining enrollments, you know, you always have a certain number of folks who, you know, who retire or move on and that kind of thing. And so, you try and, you know, sometimes you can just not fill those positions if it works. It's very challenging at the high school level, because it's not like, you know, everybody's very discipline-specific, and you also need to have breadth as well as, you know, so just assessing classroom size doesn't work like it does at the elementary level. So, just, you know, any, cutting in any kind of a program at a high school, particularly where you're trying to build enrollment and build it back up again, as I'm sure is happening here in Danvers, it's a challenge, because it's not always just a, it's not just the math of class sizes that's at stake when you're having to make those decisions, but there are definitely times where you have to make difficult budgetary decisions. I have not worked in a community where there was significant decline in enrollments. It's been pretty stable and steady, which has been, certainly been nice from a budgetary point of view, but, you know, there are times, obviously, where you need to make difficult decisions based on those numbers, but at the high school level, it's very difficult just to judge it by, you know, class size.
Follow-up?
I have a follow-up.
Yes, please.
I know you spoke that you have specific experience with significant declines, but the steady decline, can you just talk us through a little bit on like, what kind of projections you look at, what kind of, whether or not it's classroom size or just population size of towns, but how would you make kind of future projections?
You know, it's really hard to get past two or three years. And like, we've used, you know, Nezdek before to do like long-range, six, seven-year-out enrollment projections. In Maine, actually, well, actually, we're, right now, we're, and Scarborough contemplating getting to referendum for a new elementary school. And we have a consultant who's just finishing a long-term enrollment study for Scarborough now. The challenge, and we actually had one that was just before COVID broke, and the challenge with those long-term enrollment studies is that if you're off in the first year or two, the rest of the years are way off, and it's just, it's kind of, it's no longer meaningful. And that's what happened with the last enrollment study that was done in Scarborough was right before the pandemic. Everybody experienced that dip, dip in enrollment from COVID, and Scarborough was definitely no, you know, wasn't spared that. So, the enrollment dipped considerably as a result of not having in-person schooling, and it has bounced back, but threw off a lot of the enrollment projections that were there. So, that can be the challenge, but there's definitely a lot of consultants who will do a longer-term enrollment study, which can be pretty powerful in trying to budget, you know, and talking with the, you know, town manager a little bit, seems like, you know, with, I mean, the high school is definitely the exception with the technical school, but enrollment has been pretty relatively consistent in Danvers over many years. But those studies can get tough if you're off in the first couple of years. So, we've done like our own internal kind of year-to-year, project out a year, project out two years, and then, like I said, this time around, I think we're hoping that the longer-term enrollment study that we should be getting the data from, and that actually the next couple of weeks will help with that planning process for the new elementary school.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question. Given that our district is seeing enrollment decline at the high school, given the technical school and the various parochial high schools, et cetera, what are your initial thoughts or strategies in regards to try to mitigate some of that and draw more kids or keep more kids within our public schools?
You know, I was, Adam was sharing with me a little bit this morning, some of the marketing materials and campaigns and just visits to the school, and I think that, I think all of those things are just awesome, and, you know, the school pride of going to high school in your community, I think is huge, and so, any ways that you can market that and have, you know, have kids visit the schools and strengthen that, the strength in what's in place for eighth graders and like a step up in being able to do more on that transition from eighth to ninth. We didn't talk a whole lot about some of the things that are already being done, but that is certainly an opportunity there to do some step-up stuff with the eighth-grade kids coming up into the high school, and I think, I think all of those things can pay off.
Any other follow-ups? All right, with that, that is the last actual question, and so, we'd like to allow you a time to make a closing statement, any remarks, anything you want us to know, anything we didn't ask that you want to tell us?
I just, I'm really appreciative of everybody's time today. Put in a lot of steps, but it was definitely, it was definitely all worth it, and I just wanted to particularly acknowledge Mary Wormer. She was just with me all day and just a fountain of just information, and what she's been doing this year in her role as interim is just nothing short of inspirational. So, she has taken on so many different hats and does so, obviously, with such respect and class, so that was, that was really wonderful to spend time and pick her brain a little bit as well, and then also meet the administrative team. I just felt like through the whole day that this community could just be a great fit for me as an educational leader. It's been just an inspiring day, and I appreciate all the thoughtful questions that you put together as a school committee and this whole process from, you know, from the opening round interviews to today. It's just, it's been, it's been great, and I've just really appreciated everybody's thoughtful and direct answers to my questions, and just the passion that I see in people about the schools here has been inspiring for me, just as an educator. So, I feel like there are a lot of, there are definitely some connections to, to, I think, what I've been able to do in, up in Maine and Falmouth and in Scarborough, and how I lead, and I would hope that it would be a good fit for this community, and I look forward to the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Jeff.
All right, so, that's it. What we're going to do is take a recess, and I expect this recess will be 30 to 45 minutes so that we can, you know, get our thoughts together individually and consider what we want to say now that we've had the chance to talk to all three candidates. So, with that, Jeff, we're going to let you go. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
End of a long day.
There we go.
And, you know, we're, again, appreciate everybody's thoughtful questions in this process. Thank you to members in the audience. Anyone who wants to hang around, you certainly can, but we'll probably be a little while this time. So, with that, we will be in recess.
Thank you.
Gabe, and we will just talk about your impressions of all three candidates. If you had the opportunity, if you were one of the people checking references or you've checked references, chat a little bit about, you know, how that went. Again, you don't have to mention particular names of who you talked to, but a general summary of what you found. And you are allowed to state your preferences among the candidates, too. So, feel free. So, why don't we start with you, Robyn?
Okay, so, I'm just going to go in alphabetical order, because that's how, that's how my thing is organized. So, I'll start with Dan Bauer. You know, I had the opportunity to be part of the initial interview, and then obviously the one in front of the public, and although I wasn't, I did check in with people in the educational field, and I have not heard one negative thing about him. I've heard that he's, you know, has had, is able to have difficult conversations with anyone regardless of how well he knows that person or doesn't, great at building relationships, great at collaboration, would really be able to come and, I guess, I'd say like heal Danvers. And I really think that we really, although we want to push education and academics in Danvers, we really can't do that unless we have relationships first. We always say that with the kids and teachers, too. So, that really made me feel really good, and I received great feedback from two, just like the staff and, and actually, community members, too, about him. So, that is, I'll leave that, I can't say anything about what was in the initial interview, so I can't say anything about that. So, as far as Jeff Bruno, again, people that had former worked with him had not said anything negative about him. I guess he was great with special education. He obviously has the background as far as a superintendent, really knows curriculum well. I think that he really did a great job about talking about like staff morale as a way to measure metrics of a district. And the last person I will talk, we can like always go back and forth, right?
Of course.
Okay. Because you're catching me off guard going first.
I'm sorry, well, you know, I have faith in you, even if it is a little careless.
So, the last, the last candidate is Peter Cushing, and I think that he definitely did a lot of research within, about Danvers, which I thought was great. My, I think that he knows curriculum, he has experience as a assistant superintendent in Medford, he talks about, you know, being actively anti-racist, about being like transparent to the point of criminality. However, if I were to say right at this moment, because you want to know what I would say right now, right?
You can.
Okay. I, right now, would be leaning toward Dan Bauer, because I think that right now, we need someone who is going to re-establish trust in the community. But I'm interested in everyone else's thoughts and feedback and reference checking.
Your turn, Alice.
All right, well, I think with, along with Robyn, I had the opportunity to meet these candidates in a previous interview, so I do have that experience as well. And I think I first started with what I was looking for, for superintendent, and what was clear with the 11, how many interviews did we have, 12, 11?
No, we had seven.
Seven. Was, Danvers is in a good place. You know, we are very much admired by other districts in the state in terms of what we already have placed curriculum-wise, D and E-wise, you know, SEL, like, I think that we have to give ourselves credit as a district. So, you know, I'm not necessarily looking for a candidate to come in and change the establishment internally at central office or at the school. So, I do believe that we are in a good place. So, that's kind of going into my thoughts as I was looking at all the candidates. For me, leadership, cultural fit, and then vision was something that I was really looking for in the candidates that we have met with over the last couple of nights. You know, the greatest opportunity, I think, in our district is someone who can come in and be a leader. So, you know, I think from what we went through, it's clear to me, based on even some of the feedback that we received from the community, that, and I think Dan really exemplified the leadership skills that we're looking for, for the next superintendent. In terms of cultural fit, it's interesting, like, you know, who can fit in currently and what we're going to be like in the future, I'm having a struggle with in terms of, you know, who would fit in now and then where we want to be tomorrow. So, that is kind of something, it's kind of in the back of my head that I don't have an answer for. I think, you know, looking for someone who's authentic, someone who can build community was really important to me, and I think, you know, both, all three candidates, I think were very strong in that sense. I loved when Peter spoke a lot about community and bringing the community together, because I think there's a real opportunity, you know, those people that know me, I think it struck a chord when he talked about social media and cellphones. So, I really appreciated him acknowledging that in terms of our children in the district. So, I did appreciate him speaking about that. Jeff Bruno tonight, I'm very impressed by him. He, to me, feels like he can take the job and just start on Monday morning type of thing, right? So, I think that is, to me, you know, something that I'm thinking about as well, like what that learning curve will look like. So, I don't have a preference right now, so I'm eager to hear everyone else's feedback and thoughts, too.
Can I just also, just so I know that the community only saw the interviews, we're also going back with, I mean, Alice and I had a little bit more time as far as we had initial interviews, but also just talking to community members at all, you know, all stakeholders in the community who were able to meet each of the candidates, so it isn't just based on these like one interviews, I just wanted to clarify, and obviously, reference checking.
Josh, your turn, sir.
Great. So, I do think that that's a good point, Robyn. So, the, we all saw these candidates in different lenses, right? So, there was initial screening, I visited with all of them during their community interaction, just the regular panel interviews, and I conducted interviews for Dan Bauer. So, I just wanted to share the, what some of the findings were on Dan. Just to kind of summarize this, a lot of the common themes that I did get a hold of was relationship building, collaboration, these were common themes. He was visible. A lot of people said that he was at every sort of event that had happened in the, in the community, from sports to drama, and seemed to be kind of tireless, like the guy doesn't sleep. But leadership was another common theme that came out of it, and talked about his collaboration style of leadership, and also building culture, right, which I think is big for Danvers right now, because I've heard it in the interviews, they were calling it either a branding issue or a perception issue, whatever it was, but that was one of the things that came out loud and clear from his current supervisor, his current superintendent, as well as former principal, that he was the assistant principal under. So, I think there was a lot of that. He's also kind of a bit of a whiz on social media, which I think is also something that we're trying to do here as well. I do think that there is some other great things that came out of this, some quotes that came out of this was, "Danvers needs Dan right now," which I thought was good, and that was in relation to the current branding and perception issue that we have. And also, when I dig into these references, I did four thorough references, and those are the common themes that actually came out of all four, but one of the quotes that came out was, "Dan's a treasure for any community that scoops him up." And also, I was, you know, I was just overall impressed with it. Obviously, when somebody gives references, you have kind of a feeling that they're going to be pretty positive, right? We'd be shocked if something came out very negative, but... But, you know, just seeing that, I thought it was, they were very strong references. And I really dug into these a little bit. When I, when I try to do fair balance on these, I try to find something that, that, you know, what's an area for, that they can improve on? Or where would they struggle to, where would Dan struggle to come in if he is the candidate of choice? It was basically, he doesn't know what he doesn't know at this point. He's, he's currently a high school principal at Marblehead High School. He's never done a district-wide budget. So these are the types of things that would anybody, and it would be a stretched position for him, but I don't necessarily think that's, that's something that disqualifies him. So I, you know, overall, the references are very good. I hope I'm not rambling too much. So I wanted to hit that first.
That's helpful.
Good. So when I look at what I'm looking for in a candidate from, from my perspective here, I think leadership is always, is big. I do think that we do need some change here. I think there's a lot of good things that are going on here, but given the most recent, you know, several years that we've had, some, some issues, I think we need somebody that will come in and be that leader and not shy away from change and challenge that status quo. That's, that's where a lot of my, the questions that I was asking during the interview were. So just to kind of go through the, in alphabetical, I thought Dan did a very good job with that. I think his, it came across, he had a presence, a leader. I saw that just from the interactions with the community that he had. You know, I think a lot of relationships, stressing of starting with the elementary school and kind of citing data that said that elementary, he's strong performance in elementary schools is kind of an indicator that they're going to, that students are going to continue to succeed at the middle school and high school level, and then so on and so forth. So that's kind of a quick thing for Dan. Also, visibility and social media, I think, would be, would be key for this. But overall, just a leader in the community, I think, you know, that was my sense that I took away from Dan. Going next in alphabetical order is Jeff, who we, who we met with tonight. And I thought Jeff would also be someone that possesses really good leadership skills. I think he's a candidate that could hit the ground running. He's currently the, the only superintendent that we interviewed, right? So he would be able to take his experience currently up in Maine and hit the ground running here as well, just as a, if he is the candidate of choice as a, as a superintendent. You know, I thought he had some really good answers as far as, just a lot of things we dug into a little bit more and some follow-up questions, and I thought he had some really strong answers on that as well. So overall, very positive with Jeff as well. And then finishing up with Dr. Cushing, I thought Dr. Cushing did a great job as well. Again, assistant superintendent in a, in a large school in Medford, and I think has a proven track record as well, and another candidate that can hit the ground running. I thought his, talking about, you know, different metrics that he would use and his specific plans were also very strong. Focus on special ed. I, I thought, you know, I'm trying to summarize a lot of these, it's kind of hard not to ramble a little bit. But, but again, another strong candidate on that one. I, I don't necessarily want to share who my number one, number two, number three are right now, but I think, just to give a quick summary on, on just Dan's references, as well as just overall impressions of the other, the three candidates.
All right, Gabe.
Hey there. First, I want to say this has been quite the experience. I think we have three really excellent candidates. I can't thank the committee, Robyn, Alice, and Dorothy for the incredible work and all the other folks who participated in the process. It's, it's been quite enlightening. The way that I approached this and, you know, myself, Josh, and Eric split up the candidates. So my main focus of research was on Dr. Cushing, did extensive, you know, checks on his references and collected that. So in how I'm going to share my information, I'm just going to share the references that I collected on Dr. Peter Cushing, and then I'll talk about the candidates individually in that way. I didn't expect to get anything negative on any of the candidates from their references or else that would have been pretty interesting. But going back into Dr. Cushing's oldest references, and it gets pretty consistent across the board. One example from Ashburnham was that, you know, Dr. Cushing's a motivator. He has urban and rural experience. He's a whole school builder. He builds communities. He has genuine care and passion for children and the staff. Another reference said Peter is a doer. He's a great organizational guy. He's upfront. He's a good political player, great listener at all levels. Most recent reference from Medford called him a collaborative partner. His commitment in, in interactions with staff and students are top-notch. He's a change maker. He gets everyone involved. So the themes around all of the references for Dr. Cushing were really about his enthusiasm, his experience, his love for the kids, his operational experience, and the way that he manages himself in regards to town politics, and his ease in going in and out the buildings, and his visibility and presence. For me, I mean, going into it and going, and having those types of references, when I think about, you know, Danvers and why I joined the school committee, when I think about, you know, the leadership that I wanted within the top of the district and how I wanted that to flow with community building, really, really resonated with me. I found Dr. Cushing's interview to be just excellent across the board. I thought he answered every question. He had a lot of detail for every single thing that we asked for. But then I also reflect on, you know, having someone of the presence of Mary Warnes, who I thought, I think, is doing an excellent job within Danvers in where we are today. And I, and I've said this in school committee meetings, I think our town has a little bit of a negative bias within the town. Like, there's a lot of good things happening at Danvers, so who's the guy who can come in and really amplify that and get it going? And that's how I got my head around, you know, the type of candidate and who do we want in this district. So that just kind of gives you a little look into my frame of mind. Dr. Cushing seems to be an incredible change maker. Would he be too much for Danvers? Not, not really sure. I'm not sure if we need that much change, but is he an incredibly capable person that any district would be lucky to have? I mean, absolutely. And I'll stop there with Dr. Cushing. Dan Bauer, an absolutely impressive individual. I did not check Dan Bauer's references, but I didn't have to. Just the influx of unsolicited references, the local support, friends of friends, everyone somewhere somehow seems to know Dan Bauer. Meeting him in the community meeting, his immediate presence, his ability to interact with every single person in the room without much effort was incredibly impressive to me. I know of all three candidates, he probably has the least experience in regards to being administrator, but it's not something that I'm necessarily concerned with, given the resources and the quality of educators and the administration that we currently have within Danvers. He's also someone that I see that could be that community builder, someone who can take the good that we have and bring it out forth into the community. It's just something that seems natural, and he just kind of oozes that confidence. And I feel like this is someone that the, the community can put their arms around. And I'll stop there with Dan Bauer. What do I say about Bruno? Jeff Bruno, just a solid guy. He has the experience from day one, as everyone else has mentioned. I really love his demeanor, his cool confidence, love his sense of humor. I mean, he absolutely has all of the experience and all the qualifications that we would absolutely want and be comfortable with, as him being the superintendent within Danvers. I absolutely have no issues with him if he were to take the job and start tonight. So, I mean, I can't add anything else to that. I just, again, I think we have three very, very, very capable candidates. And so when it comes down to my decision, for me, it becomes the overarching community, teacher, feedback person who can come in from day one, and I think everyone will put their arms around and rally around. And when I think about who that person could be, I'm, I'm going to say my, my, my number one guy right now is Dan Bauer.
All right. Thank you all. So I think my impressions are not necessarily very different from everybody else's. I will go alphabetically, this seems to be the choice here.
I didn't go alphabetically.
Dan, I, yeah. With Dan Bauer, comes, sort of highly recommended for his people skills and abilities to forge relationships. And I, he left me with the impression that he's, he's a doer. He comes up with ideas and gets them done by building teams and people working together. Really, I suspect a straight shooter who's going to tell people, you know, how he thinks things are, but I mean that in a good way. He'll be transparent and honest and direct. And he knows the North Shore certainly. And I think that because of that, he, he brings to the district, he would bring to the district, a certain amount of confidence from folks who've been here for a while. He's a known quantity and very well thought of at Marblehead, no question. You know, you can't help but sort of appreciate what he brings to the table. Jeff Bruno, I had the, the chance to check with some people who knew him and have worked with him, and he comes across from those people as someone who is a great team builder, very collaborative, and the kind of guy who takes accountability if something doesn't work and spreads the credit around when it does. Someone described him as a detail-oriented person, but also a visionary. His resume is most impressive in the sense that if you go through his experience before he's a superintendent, he has experience at every level from elementary through middle school on up, and has a proven track record as superintendent in two districts. So, and beyond that, you know, he also came to a superintendency as executive director of curriculum and instruction. And that was one of the things I think people were looking for when we put our profile together. So his resume fits pretty much everything we were looking for. Peter Cushing, very enthusiastic. I thought his level of preparation for the interview was really strong. And some say, well, you know, that doesn't nanny be a great superintendent. But the fact is, it showed a level of interest, homework, detail, and really trying to understand the challenges that the district faced. So, bottom line, I think we have three excellent candidates. Personally, I'm persuaded that the experience is the difference for me, and so I would support Jeff Bruno. But honestly, I think we've got three very excellent candidates.
Can I also share something that I forgot, too? Dorothy, I might need to ask, we got the entry plan, can we share anything that we were, okay, that's public, okay. So one thing I just want to make note of is that we did get it, and this is a really, and maybe in the education world, this is why I feel like it's so important to put my hat on as far as that goes, but as, also as a school committee member, we got a very detailed superintendent entry plan from Mr. Bauer, months, you know, like different phases and kind of, you know, what he would be doing the first hundred days. And one thing that I really appreciated about was, was really like the guiding questions. And it really started first out with like, all the stakeholders that he's going to be meeting with would be, tell me about your background. Like, how do I get, like, tell me who you are. And I really liked that personal connection that he would be starting with. And then also, when he's asking questions about like recent history of the school system, or are we headed in the right direction, or what are the school system's core strengths? Like, how do you know? And I, I mean, there's other guiding questions, too, but this was like the first, well, actually the only one, where we got this like really detailed plan, which showed me that, you know, he's really thinking like, you know, I'm coming in August, like I'm, you know, starting the conversation as early as August, or maybe even as early as July, like, I need to meet with all these people and in these phases, and it's really sought out. And I just really appreciated that. So.
Other comments for the committee, from the committee?
We received over a hundred pieces, I think it's important for everyone to know, we received over a hundred pieces of feedback from teachers, employees, family members who attended the community meet and greets, et cetera. So we have all, and are currently, I could see, scrolling through all of that. So I just want, you know, everyone to, to know that as well, that, you know, we are taking that into consideration.
It wasn't close until after the last interview, so everyone, there was time for everyone to go on.
Anyone else?
I mean, again, three, three incredible candidates, but when I consider upside, that's, that's kind of how I landed on my number one in regards to who, who potentially would maybe one of the most sought, sought-after candidates, you know, in future openings. That's kind of where I'm there, but all of them are really incredible individuals.
Yeah, I don't think I'm ready to vote yet, so I'd like to at least continue this conversation as, I, I think I'm sitting here thinking, who wants the job the most? You know, and again, I know we, we were all impressed by how prepared Peter was. You know, there could be a question of, did that come off as too rehearsed? You know, was there any authenticity to how much he wants to work for us and with us? So I keep going back to that. So, you know, it's something for us as a committee to think about, like, who do you think really wants to work in Danvers? Not just because we posted a job opening, but, you know, someone who is actually trying to seek us out to make a change or to partner with us to really take our district to that next level. I don't have an answer to that. I'm just, you know, I want, I think, for us to think that through a little bit as well.
I mean, I don't know where else Jeff Bruno applied, but I mean, it is public that Peter Cushing applied to many districts in, all over Mass. I know that Dan Bauer did say, and I haven't heard else what differently, that he did only apply to Danvers.
All right. Other comments, thoughts, further discussion?
We did receive feedback, I think, there was quite a bit of feedback about some of the candidates lacking future vision and strategic vision. And, you know, I kept thinking about that as well. You know, we gave them sort of like a limited time with each group and each team, but I don't think that's not, I don't think that's necessarily a bad thing, because I would hope, similar to what Robyn shared, that, you know, Dan Bauer had a, a plan in place that, you know, any candidate would come in and work with us and listen to central office, work with Adam and Mary, and kind of listen before we kind of hear what their vision is. So I did want to address that, because I felt like that was coming through a bit in some of the feedback that was provided.
I just want to say, from, from a professional perspective, we, we do focus on the individuals and, and the qualities we're looking for, and just keep it at that. Like, I don't want to make comparisons between candidates. I think they're all incredible.
Agreed.
And really, let's just focus on specifically what we're looking for, because I could literally walk away with any one of them.
Yes.
Being our superintendent.
Right. The other, the other point I'd like to just make is the, we did, we polled the, the community to find out what everybody was looking for, and what came to the top was they were looking for somebody that was more visible, a, a strong leader. So when I started to, to look at the different candidates, and I'm still currently looking at the, with the pile of paper on the computer in front of me, is, you know, I, I tried to identify behaviors and characteristics that would meet that, but also, you know, I'm aligned to a lot of the things that the community's looking for as well. So I think there's a, there's a lot that went into this and continues to go into this ongoing discussion about who we're going to look for.
I don't think we can dismiss the community input.
Yeah.
That is overwhelming.
I feel like, yeah, it's a thing, keep, I feel like my, my decision, it's, it's also just based on what we create as a description, but also like the feedback, because we represent the community of Danvers. So it's, you know, we're not voting on our personal preferences, but what the community needs.
To an extent.
No. Personal preferences?
No, no, no. I mean, like, in community, because community is one component of this, plus the entire process that you folks have put in place.
Oh, right. But I'm saying, the community at large.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Other comments?
Can we hire all three?
Not according to the budget, no. Nope.
No, I mean, it's not, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a good problem to have, that we have three people in a It's a good problem to have, that we have three people, any of whom we feel could do this job and do it well. It's a question of each of us, based on what we have seen, you know, who we think is the right candidate this point in time. And we can certainly, not shutting down discussion, keep talking. If you want to make a pitch for your candidate, or one candidate, or, you know, either that or we move to a motion if someone makes a motion, that's where we're at. This is why they voted this in.
Yeah, no, I think like my big thing, and just hearing from the community, you know, all along in the last year, even before we started the survey of what do we want in a superintendent, was that some, you know, the community wanted someone that was going to rebuild relationships. And I think that, you know, like, that was the main piece that came out of that. And I think until relationships are rebuilt, you cannot move the district any more forward.
That's a good point.
I mean, we talk about it all the time, like, the kids can't learn if they don't have a relationship with the teachers. While the teachers can't work to their best ability if they don't have the proper leadership and collaboration and support and relationships with their leaders, so.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I'll say, from what I saw, I think Jeff Bruno has that same ability to build relationships. I don't know, and again, I like them all. This is just, it comes down to what your gut tells you about who's right. So, again, keep talking.
I mean, I think any of these candidates does feel like a different direction for our district as well, which I think perhaps is something that is good and that we need. I mean, from my point of view, it is. So I think, again, in not helping in picking one versus another, but I do think, you know, as we think back to where we were, to where we want to be, I do feel like they each are going to offer different blends of direction that we're, might have been in previously.
Okay, so what is your pleasure? Anyone going to make a motion? Do you want another recess? What would you like to do?
So I will make a motion to appoint, what would be, offer or appoint? Offer?
It's actually a motion relative, I would say, is there a motion relative to the election of a superintendent?
Okay, so is there a motion relative to the election of a superintendent?
No, that.
Oh, that's what I thought, with my motion, okay. So I'd like to make a motion.
Your motion should be to offer the superintendency to a particular person of your choice, subject to a successful contract negotiation.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to offer Dan Bauer superintendent of Danvers Public Schools after, with the appropriate negotiation of salary and whatnot, and contract. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so does anybody object to a roll call vote?
Nope.
No.
All right, so I'm going to call the roll, starting with Robin.
Here.
Alice.
Here.
I'm sorry, was that a yes?
Oh, no.
Oh, I said here, yes.
It's a roll call. Oh, she says yes. I'm going to abstain from this right now.
Okay. Josh?
Yes.
I'm sorry, yes or no?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. And Gabe?
Yes.
All right, so we have three yes votes. We have one abstention, I haven't voted. Given that we have three, and Dan would therefore be the person, I am going to join in voting yes. I think it's very important that he start out with the full support of the board. He is the choice of the majority of this board, and we all need to support him. So, and I think he'll do a great job going into this, as I say, going into this vote. I think we have three great candidates, and I have confidence that Dan will do a terrific job for us, I have confidence that Jeff and Peter would too. So I'm very content to vote yes for Dan Bauer. And Alice, any idea to take your abstention?
I will take my abstention back, and I will vote yes. I was hoping for further discussion, but I am 100% in support of Dan.
All right, so Dan Bauer is the choice of this committee. And I understand that Dorothy Presso will give him a call. It's all subject, of course, to, say, a successful contract negotiation. I would be inclined to appoint a subcommittee for the purpose of negotiating that contract. And I'm going to appoint myself to that committee, and then one other person. Who is the most interested? Who wants to fight for this job? Josh?
Josh does.
Is everyone content with Josh and I doing this?
That is fine.
Yes.
All right, if that's the case, Josh and I will handle the negotiations.
So what would be the expected time that we would like know if we secured the contract?
I'm hoping to do it sooner rather than later, meaning.
Not months, like, like a couple of weeks?
Not even that.
Oh, okay.
I hope that we can get this done very quickly.
Okay.
All right, so let me, we have a little bit of business to do before we go. But before we move on from this, I want to thank all of the candidates for their interest in Danvers and the fine job they did presenting their skills and strengths and their interest in Danvers. We were very lucky to have such a qualified group of candidates. I want to thank Robin and Alice for running a really fine process that led us to these two candidates. You two did a marvelous job, and it is most appreciated. Jeff, Gabe, thank you for the thoughtful questions and the thoughtful deliberations tonight. I think we've got a good superintendent who's going to do great things for this district. Mary and the central office team, Adam and Pam, and everyone who, Janet, I don't want to leave you out, everyone who worked so hard to lead our candidates through the district, introduce them to the district, the staff members who took the time to speak with them and introduced them to the district, can't thank you enough. You have all made this process, I think, a very successful one. And so with that, that concludes the superintendent.
Josh has something, hold on.
I'm sorry, what? Oh, Dorothy?
Would you like to know that he accepted?
He accepted.
He accepted?
There you go.
Quick phone call.
Wow, there you go.
Wow, that was live. It was live.
We will be in touch directly to talk contract. Dorothy, I'm glad you're here. Thank you so much for all you've done to work with Robin and Alice and help this, I know you want to go out and call the other candidates, I get that. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. All right, so we have two more items. One, we have some out-of-state field trip, and is there a fundraising request also, Mary, or just an out-of-state field trip? Three out-of-state field trips, okay.
Ah, okay.
So we're presenting it as the consent calendar, which we typically do. Can I have a motion to accept the consent calendar?
Accept, motion to accept.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion?
Can I go?
Hearing none, all right. All in favor of accepting a consent calendar?
Aye.
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 We also have to pick a date for our January meeting. Before we do that, I did want to remind people of the Martin Luther King event, which is going to be in the atrium here at 4:00 on Monday, the 16th. Paul Pollock is, from the inclusion committee, is out there, give me the thumbs up so I get the time right. And Dee, I didn't see, hi, Dee. Dee Joko, who's the chairman, I know it's going to be a wonderful event, it is always a wonderful event, and so we look forward to having you here, and I hope all of my colleagues can make it, it's a wonderful afternoon, so thank you. And, all right, so now, picking a date for our regular January meeting.
And it does not have to be a Monday, right, if it works out that way?
At this point, I just want to fit it into January, yeah. Because I know, Gabe, you're away for a couple of weeks or a week?
I'm just looking at my work calendar, so I'm not texting, just.
Mary promises this one will be short, not four hours, right?
What day are we looking for?
We don't have one. So, I mean, obviously, next week it's a short week, and the 16th, you know, we wouldn't meet.
Yeah, I mean, we can, if we do it the week of the 23rd, we'll probably move our, all right, so our February meeting would be the 13th of February, so that'd be about two weeks, give or take.
What, Wednesday, the 18th, does that work? Wednesday, January 18th?
That's fine for me.
I'm sorry, what day?
Wednesday, January 18th.
January 18th.
Do I have a second?
You know, you picked the one day that I can't, I've got to be.
Eric, you're always free.
I know, but I've got to be in Rhode Island on the 18th, I'm sorry.
How about the 19th?
Yes, I could do the 19th.
I could do the 19th.
Yeah.
Everyone good?
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate you allowing that to happen.
Mary, that works for you? Yeah, okay. The 19th.
All right. Is there any further business to come before the committee?
So it's Thursday.
All right, hearing none, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Go for it, Josh.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a, we have a motion.
Oh, wait, what, what?
Pardon me.
I can't do the 19th.
Can you do it virtual if it's hybrid?
I can't.
I don't think we're allowed to do that.
I don't think we can do that anymore.
I think we can, Dorothy said you can.
Can you do it with one missing?
Yeah, you need a quorum. So could you do, he can't do the 19th, could we do it without him?
We can, sure.
I mean, are you okay with that?
Could also do another Friday night meeting, those are fine.
No, please.
How about Tuesday, the 17th? That's a potential.
The 17th, Tuesday?
One second.
That works for me.
Nope. The 18th was my day.
All right, how about Monday, the 20, I've got a, Monday, the 23rd?
I cannot do the 23rd or the 24th.
Monday, the 25th?
About the 25th.
The spelling B?
It's the spelling.
So that's a no.
About the 26th?
What day is that?
Thursday.
Okay, so it seems like someone's going to have to miss one of them, so I guess we just decide what day. It seems like January's a little packed.
I'm okay missing the 19th, and then we can just rotate.
I mean, is there anything, Mary, that's like going to be so pressing that, you know what I mean, like the January that? This is the first reading, though, so we don't, yeah, okay. So, I mean, can Gabe always like send questions? He has had, yeah.
No, just send it in advance.
Okay.
So are we sticking with the 18th? No, I'm sorry, 19th?
The 19th, yeah.
All right. Like I say, Gabe, maybe we can move you in virtually, that is allowable now, if you want, we can do that.
What's that?
We can do, we can move you virtually, I don't know if you have meetings, but. It's okay, it's an option.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? No? Thank you all again for all the hard work.